Right, we'll do that too. If you can make sure if you're making motions and say your name afterwards, but she doesn't know our faces and our heads and our voices and the seconds as well. And then once we go into the vote, I can help her out if we put it out. With that, we will move to agenda adoption. Do we have any agenda changes? I know I just said one.
And Mayor, I have one. I'd like to make a change to special presentations E. I would like to add E for special presentation by the Harrisburg Youth Council.
And then this for grant collaboration. It was best Janet never looked at, so we're adding it to E four. Any other agenda changes?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to have the agenda changed under old business. I would like to remove five E, please. Rick Russo, removing five E.
Got it. You want to have that discussion now before we go into the vote on that?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and discuss why you're removing it, Rick.
I'm removing it for multiple reasons. But one reason is the Park and Rec Director hasn't had enough time to start his course design. The second reason is we voted seven zero to put the park, put the disc golf park in, and we voted seven zero for the $10,000, which is the maximum we're. And a couple of other reasons, but we don't let Park and Rec Advisory Boards make decisions for the town, the council make. So just because somebody makes a little bit of noise and other people want to change their vote, the vote was made seven oh, we agreed for 10 grand, and that's all I know. So whatever you guys are trying to defer. I did, it's just not right. And I did research, there's 110 disc golf courses within 50 miles of Harrisburg. There's 10 pump trails in the whole state of North Carolina. So I don't know what you guys are trying to do or anybody's trying to do, but I just want to move forward. The vote's been taken, we're getting ready to go on to design, and the price is, the price is 10 grand.
I'll step in at this point. You know, when we talk about votes, you know, that's interesting. We've done re-votes several times, so I think everything's up for a re-vote in that space. The reason I asked to have that added back was I was not aware, and I think I got caught up in the idea that with Jim having a presentation, this has come up to the committee, to the Park and Rec Committee at that time. After the vote, I think about it was, I remember some conversation about where the trains were damaged, with the courtyards properly being built. And all that work was done back in there to fix such trails at the same time. And also not, I found out later that had not gone through the Park and Rec Committee. And my belief is, is if we have these folks volunteering and putting in this time, we should at least let it come up through the process as it's directed, and they come to us for a book. So I want to be on record, knowing that while I will give Jim the support moving forward, I want to be a no vote until it goes back through the Parks and Rec Committee, so they can review it, decide what's best, and then make the recommendation to the council. And Rick, you're right, the Park and Rec Committee does not dictate what the town does. The council does, but that same line, either we use that committee or we don't. And I would like to know, and I'd like those participants to understand that we respect their time and that their voice is understood and heard. So with that, I was asking for just a re-vote.
Okay, and I want to say something else to that effect, Councilman, so Councilman Smith, I agree to you too, but in my 10 years being on council, I never heard Jason or anybody else come to this board, ask them for money for a pump track. If they did it under Eric Smallwood, or they did it under Daniel, they're not here now. And all he has to do is do what I did, ask Jim if he would look into it. Jim researches it, brings it to the council. The gentleman did not do that, and we don't have to bring everybody, everything in front of the Park and Rec Advisory Board, because I'm gonna tell you, the fire board doesn't run the fire department. And how many times do we, in planning and zoning, they recommend we approve a subdivision that we don't? So that's all I'm saying. All this gentleman's got to do is go to, go to Jim, tell him what he wants, ask Jim to prepare. And that's all I did. And when there was no talking back and forth, that's the only reason I made the motion, because nobody had a beef with it. After this gentleman sends an email out about his vision, are you kidding me? That's the reason why. Send, all you guys do is go through the channels. And in 10 years, I wouldn't know the guy if I saw him walking down the street. That's all I'm saying. And you don't have to go through any board.
So, all right, so I did ask Lee to, during his manager comments, to talk about the specific issue of bypassing the Parks and Rec Advisory Board going forward. I think this will kind of caught my career anyway. He will address that in his conversation with Jim to at least accommodate what you just said, and I agree, we need to do it in that direction.
And that's all I was asking is, I mean, I can tell you that pump track has been a discussion for several years. It goes all the way back to Smallwood, when Eric was here. And then Daniel took over the conversation. And it was, you know, to me, it's not the idea of whether it was a pump track or there was a disc golf. What it was is, is it didn't follow the process. And I would just like to be on record as being there to say, hey, I respect the time these guys are putting in. Let's, you know, if we've got a committee, let's use it. Let's not kind of bypass those guys and go, well, you know, we didn't want to hear you on this.
Right, and again, Lee and Jim will probably, they'll address that during management's comments. They'll cover that up.
This is Councilman Dellinger, and I'd like to speak to it if I may, Mayor. All right, I am the advisory for the Park and Rec. After the vote did occur and went to that meeting a week later, they were concerned. They had concerns about, about it being there and the work that was put in to put the pump station there. There was a lot of manpower that was put in by individuals that did not charge the town any money. They want to be sure that whatever's designed, whatever's done, meets the needs of both a pump station and a disc golf thing. All right, so here's the thing, we need to, as council, be sure that we have two viable things, and we don't have two viable, two things that are not going to be viable to either a bike path, a mountain bike path, or a disc golf. And Mr. Jason was not, Mr. Marshall was not able to be here this evening. He is in Colorado. He gave me a statement to read, and I would like to read that if that's okay, Mr. Smith. All right, my name is Jason Marshall, and I'm currently serving on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm currently out of town, otherwise I would be in attendance to speak in person. I'm writing in regards to the disc golf course planned for the Harrisburg, Harris Depot Park areas. Many of you may have seen my communication concerning this subject in the emails. I have concerns with the location of the proposed disc golf course, and I'm asking that the town council and the Park and Recreation Department study the location and impacts to existing trails and facilities. I'm asking that the public have the opportunity to provide feedback so that any untended consequences are avoided. I'd like to see a layout and/or plans for the location so that conflicts can be evaluated. A study should evaluate problem areas and potential conflict zones while also considering impacts to existing trails. I've found many studies in other communities that evaluated proposed disc golf courses in an existing park that was not considered a greenfield area, and propose that a similar study and report and memorandum be done to document this process. I'm not against the disc golf course, but do want consideration for the location and all the efforts volunteers in the community have made to establish and maintain the mountain bike trail. The existing trail is a great place to learn how to ride a mountain bike, and the addition of the pump track will also create a great learning environment for kids and adults alike. Thank you for your time and consideration. So as the liaison to the advisory board, I wanted to speak on their behalf. And he was not the only one that had concerns. And if I remember last month when this was brought up, and Jim corrected me, but I still got the impression come August 1st, it was ready to go, and people were ready to throw the disc thing. But I know we've still got to do that study. So why do we really want to spend dollars when we've got people that actually use the course in two ways, know it, disc golf and mountain bikes, to give us valuable information? So thank you, council and members of the public for considering that.
So Jim, can you address where we are with the design process? And obviously, that design process can go right back through, yes, sorry, through the advisory board to show that there is, there isn't any contention with the plan B of going to Farm Mill, I believe is what you even put in here about, right?
Yeah, so thank you for giving me a chance to speak. So right now, where we're at is how the whole process started. We brought in a design professional to give us an idea of where it could fit different spots. And he got up above there on Harrisburg Park, and he felt like, yeah, this is a good place to go. And so we basically made a priority of that would be the best place for it, with the most access to people, with the park, and using that end of the park. We also found, you know, that Farm Mill Park would also be a good plan B if we could make it work. And so the next process, part of the process, would be to have the actual professional come in, and we'll start measuring and laying out that, laying out a course. We haven't even come close to that yet. You know, we're really in a position of getting out there, start measuring, and kind of get things together. And that's where I did speak with Jason that evening at the advisory board meeting. And he and I spoke for a good half hour after the meeting, just to make him feel more comfortable and get him to be part of the process, so we can put his eyes on it too. You know, one of the reasons, and I said it the last council meeting, was one of the reasons we really felt strongly about that site was not only the disc golf course professionals, but Adam Abernathy, who is our park superintendent, also was a member of that club. He's friends with Jason, who, Adam's got as many man-hours in that place as anybody else, both privately and professionally. And he felt strongly that it was a really good place to do it. So it wasn't just this, just a guy thinks he can go there and do it, you know? And I want to stress too, that, you know, all my career, I've always felt like rec space sometimes is shared space. And I would not ever get rid of, you know, cause one to be neutralized or even get rid of for the favor of another recreation opportunity. So for me, it looked like a really good place, dual purpose, dual service. You know, we spoke many times, and you know, look at our soccer facility, our soccer field. What do we have around it? A big walking track, running track, you know, two opportunities, one space. So that's a really important thing to me. And so I would, you know, let council know, please feel comfortable that I would make sure this is going to be done right. This is going to be done with a bunch of set eyes on it, proper measurements. If in any way it doesn't look like it can fit, we'll go to plan B, and we'll go another place. We'll go try Farm Mill. But that's where we're at, and we're probably a good month and a half, a couple of months out before we're really ready to go to start moving and shaking and doing different things. Especially now considering, you know, we're going to just slow it down a little bit, make sure Jason and the advisory board can have their look at it as well. But I really wanted to feel strong, I mean, let you guys know, I feel strongly that I did a lot of the advisory board that, let the advisory board know that evening that we were doing this, this program. And, you know, felt like we were, that was an opportunity for me to bring them up to date as to where we're going. We were not in any position at that time to just say it's done, it was just, here's where we're going. So, you know, the process may have been a little skewed, and I have no problem with making sure we follow procedures and get that thing back. I think we'd have been at this point anyways, one way or another, that I, whether it was done first or second.
As I said at the beginning, it's not that I'm not providing my support. I will support you in this, but I would like it to roll back prior to that, because in my eyes, it should have been vetted up that way. You know, that crew has put in a lot of time and effort over the years. A lot of our 4th of July projects wouldn't have been halfway as successful without a lot of their volunteer work over the years. So in no way did I ever want to neglect those folks. And, you know, I even wondered if there was an opportunity to put the disc off over between the middle school to high school, I know that's county property, but it's a space that's going to be a freeway at some point, that's going to tie up to the neighborhood right across from Harrisburg Park. And there's a lot of open space there that's being used part of the year for more of the cross-country team. So there was several opportunities in that space. So, you know, being, as I mentioned, we have, in the last year, I think it was, recast, I mean, three different votes. So I can see it as a big issue. Let's still do it. Let me get one more shot, let me come back and say, you know, bring it back to us when everybody's all in their age and we're all comfortable.
That's fair enough, I have no problem. I don't disagree, that's for sure. Just, so this thing kind of picked up speed quickly and just got where it got for a couple of reasons, you know? And was never my intention to exclude the advisory board, that's for sure. That's why I was doing that evening and bringing them up today, so.
You know, had it been on the agenda that night, and we had the time to look through it, we probably would have discovered all this, and we wouldn't have gotten to this point. And I'm sorry that it did, but could I have a re-vote?
Can you also, there is an opportunity for the pump track that's completely clear of all that's.
And I did say that to Jason that evening, I said, one, Jason, I wasn't aware of a pump track. I, you know, been here three months at the time when he brought it up and said, I'm not a minor, you got to bring that stuff to me, let me know what your needs and desires are. In the process, we did discover, it's talking to Adam Abernathy, that there's a spot up at the top in an old volleyball court, which is, I believe, where they want to move it to. One has nothing to do with the other. It won't, it won't get in the way of, the pump track that goes there will not be anywhere near, I shouldn't say anywhere near, it won't be part of the course. It will be a separate standalone program facility, without any issues at all. If it goes there, which is what the plan is, I believe, is, they've moved it a couple of times. It was down the flow where, at one point, they were going to put it down where the steel sod farm was, and another place. And recently, they want to put it up by Shelter One, just up at the hill where the old volleyball court was. And that's where it will go. There are two separate functions, two separate programs that we can do very easily, one without effect, one not affecting the other. And I plan on getting with Jason and Adam, soon as Jason gets back, to go discuss that and see what we got. So I can come back to you folks and, you know, again, get the advisory board involved, make sure they know what's going on, and get back to you guys and see what we can do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna do is, we're gonna do this in a couple of pieces, Mark, because I don't want to have to do this three times with the agenda. So I'm gonna go to, I want to take a motion to remove five E as an actual motion before I approve the whole entire agenda. That way, we're making sure we're getting this one now.
Motion on the floor to approve, to remove five E.
I have a second. Just not talk about it, we just had a discussion. Yeah. But I'm trying to make sure, but I don't know whether he's going to still.
Are you going to second? Because we already had the discussion.
No, I want to vote against it, because I don't want that.
I don't want him to vote against the entire agenda, that's why I pulled this out. Everybody get with that? All right. So I have a second for removing five E. I'm second. I got a second on the floor. Anywhere discussion, we just discussed it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That's three. Ian, Ron, and Ronnie, we're good? All right, so that comes out. Now I'm going to go back to the entire agenda with E four added. I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder portion of the agenda with E four. I've got a motion on the floor. Thanks. Properly seconded. Remember, yell at me. All in favor, say aye. 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 All right, indication that my councilor agrees there.
Please bow your hands. Heavenly Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that we seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let's act based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, Lord. Place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you may direct us. Amen.
Amen.
I stand for finally. Allegiance. To the republic, always and hence, one nation, under God, in the heavens, and in the earth. Got some special presentations. First up is Harris County Community Needs Assessment.
Good evening, council. I have copies of the needs assessment report for the council members that are here tonight. And then Councilman Russo, I could email out to the internal town manager and have, share that with everyone. Thank you. And is there a way to pull up the presentation?
Please drop it.
I submit.
I was given a presentation, is there someplace I can get it?
It's on the website in the packet. I can go ahead and insert. So every four, I'll give a little bit of background, and then I can talk through it. If you're not able to pull it up, that's fine. So every four years in the state of North Carolina, health departments are required to do a community needs assessment report. So the last one that was done was done in 2016. This is the 2020 report. As you can see, it is a robust report. I will say there's an executive summary that's going to give you a broad overview and the newly identified community needs that I'll talk through a little bit tonight. So the new needs that were identified, the number one need being housing. So focused on the homeless and housing insecure populations, as well as access to affordable housing as rent continues to increase in our communities and things like that. Followed by behavioral health, specifically looking at mental health needs in the community. And mental health has been a community need since 2012. So this is not something that's new. And then the final priority need was the early childhood education and development. So really focusing on that zero to five population. So this process is conducted over a nine-month period. It started in the fall of 2019 and concluded in July of 2020 in the midst of COVID. So the vote did include the consideration of how COVID has impacted our community and some data around that. So you'll notice, I believe, the executive summary is pages 13 through 16. Further on the report, it's going to go over data that was covered during the needs assessment planning council. So you're going to find data on a variety of topics, substance use, mental health-related, chronic conditions, obesity, it's going to have everything in there. We did look at data by zip code at times, we looked at data by race and ethnicity, as well as looking at data by income level, educational attainment. I think that's it, race and ethnicity, and then zip code. And so I know with the racial equity work that you all have been doing in Harrisburg, we've looked at the data and run Harrisburg data specific to these questions. We do do a community survey. So in that survey, we asked questions, about 46 different questions, and we did have 2,700 residents in the, in Cabarrus County complete that survey. And so we try and survey 1% of the adult population in the county, so we exceeded that goal. But when we think about housing, so we have about 80, I believe, 8,300 households in Cabarrus County that are living in poverty. So that really puts them at higher risk for potentially losing their housing or just in unstable housing. When we think about individuals being seen in the night shelter, so that's going to be your Salvation Army night shelter, over the course of last year, 310 unique individuals were seen in the night shelter at the Salvation Army across the course of the year. You want to scroll down a little bit? I'll talk through these, thank you. You can keep going. So one of the things we do, I know I mentioned the needs, I'm going to kind of jump around a little bit. But one thing that when community planning council members vote, we ask them to consider three things. The magnitude of the issue, how big of a problem is it? The seriousness of the consequence. So if we do nothing, if we say today, we look at this data and we say, too bad, we don't do anything at all, how many people are going to be impacted? And then feasibility, how likely is it that as a community, we can respond and actually move the needle in those spaces? So like I was saying a minute ago, 8,300 households living in poverty, the data you're seeing was for before COVID. So you're going to see evictions and foreclosures, which we know that there was a stay on those during COVID that the governor put into place. But they were averaging about 100 evictions a month and 30 foreclosures a month. Or yes, that's right. And then year-over-year rent, so this is looking at Concord and Kannapolis, some data that's available, but they've increased, I believe it's six and eight, I have terrible vision, so, six and eight percent. So when you compare them to other municipalities in different areas, we do have a higher rate of rent increase year-over-year. And then again, those unique individuals seen. Another data point that's not in this presentation around homeless population is the point in time count. So that's something that's done the last Wednesday in January, and they actually try, and every county in the state has to do it, they try and get a hard count of homeless individuals in the community. So they will count all the beds that were taken that night, so when we're talking about the Salvation Army, Cban, who has a space or who has a bed at CCM, so Corporate Christian Ministry. But they also try and go out and count individuals in the tent communities. So they'll try and do things where they'll, they'll let people know the week in advance, we're going to be out next Wednesday with coffee and donuts, come by and get it, so they can try and get a really accurate count as close as possible. We've averaged about 120. Now, this point in time count does not include individuals who can pay for their weekly hotel or a nightly hotel, or that are staying with another family member. So if I have a family member who will let me stay with them when I'm having a difficult time financially, I am not counted as homeless or housing insecure in that point in time count. So there is a big gap when we think about individuals who may not have stable housing on their own. You'll scroll down. The other, some other data on housing, homeless students that are identified through Cabarrus County Kannapolis City Schools has averaged over 500 combined for the last three to four school years. And that becomes even more challenging ever to capture in the time of COVID, because students were out of school for such a period of time. And then alternative housing solutions, so those may be more affordable options. We've got about 4,600 units in the county, but when you think about 8,300 families living in poverty, if at any time where we have something like a pandemic and people are losing their jobs and things like that, there's not the availability of units compared to the number of families that may potentially need them in a given time. The next slide is going to talk about behavioral health data. So we have 1.7 behavioral health providers per 10,000 population. We are in what's considered a medically underserved area for mental health providers. I think it's just important to understand, when we think about if we got the flu or if we came down and, you know, maybe we had an injury or something like that, we're going to get a medical visit probably within less than 24 hours. If I was sick this morning and didn't fill out, I'd probably have a doctor's appointment this afternoon. If you or a loved one is experiencing a mental health crisis, you're probably not getting an appointment or an assessment in the next week, and sometimes even longer, based on the severity or the concern. So what ends up happening is you end up seeking care in the emergency department because you're in crisis. The emergency department isn't equipped or necessarily built to see those individuals. They will do the best they can, but they often end up staying in the ED for several days until there's a placement available. So that bar on the right-hand side, and all the data that I'm going over here for you right now is also in the full report that you're receiving. But that's looking at total psychiatric admissions for atrium health in Cabarrus. It's looking at it by geriatric patients, adult patients, and child patients. The data from 2020 does actually show a dip in that. But what's interesting about that is the reason why there was a decrease is because people were concerned to go to the emergency department because of COVID, so they may not have sought services anyways, which is a concern. And then the stepping up initiative, and I know several years ago, when I came through the state and county health report, the time Sheriff Riley was over this program, and now Sheriff Shaw has continued it, but stepping up screams individuals when they are arrested or booked in at the Cabarrus County Detention Center for mental health and substance use disorders. For early childhood education and development, we do have 65% of children that are zero to six that have parents that both report to work. We have 58 childcare centers that serve populations zero to five. And then we have the largest percentage of GS 110 programs. So those are your faith-based childcare centers. And the reason I highlight, and that's the largest percentage in the state, Cabarrus County has one of the largest percentages in the state. The reason I highlight that is just because child-based, childcare programs based in a faith community have different regulations, different standards than your zero, one, two, three, four, five-star programs that are in other settings. And that's just a regulatory thing. They still have inspections by the health department and certain things like that, but they may not have the same educational requirements. The other thing to highlight is cost. If you have one child in daycare in Cabarrus County, you're going to be paying about $9,500 a year. If you have two, you're close to 20 grand a year for children. So when we think about individuals that are trying to access childcare services, if I'm working an hourly wage job, these are probably not options for me. And they're also not overnight or evening hours. So when you think about second or third shift workers, childcare in a childcare facility is not an option in Cabarrus County, so you're probably using a family member or a friend. And the challenge then becomes is if they are sick or unable to watch your child for a night, you may not have another option, which means now you're calling out for work. And then that kind of propels that cycle potentially being misplaced from a job again or losing that job. And then the last slide for the data part of this subsidized childcare, you'll see that huge dip there in that DHS waitlist back in June of 2020. Usually, we would be very happy to see a dip in some data that we review and things like that. But this is really caused from individuals who were eligible for subsidized childcare through DHS, losing that voucher opportunity and losing the availability to be on the waitlist, because if they lost employment, they weren't meeting income requirements. And so then as they, things have opened back up in our area and our state, as COVID hopefully continues to go away, they will have to rejoin the waitlist once they have employment. And then, so if I was five back from the waitlist, and now I've regained employment, I'm now at the end of the waitlist, and I don't get to rejoin at five back from getting that subsidy. And then I think that next slide kind of wraps up for next steps. But for here, part of my role and responsibility is just to let you know the report is complete. We are always happy to share whatever data we have captured or where we have gotten data to make those connections for folks to use in our community. The community needs assessment report is intended to be a document that helps guide us as community partners in the work that we do and just hopefully make an impact in these areas. At this time, we will submit action plans to the state in September, showing them how we're going to move the needle in these areas. And hopefully, we'll start to see some of this data. And we, as always, I'll come back again next year with the state and county health report that will give you an update on some of the data here, and if we've seen declines or if we've seen other issues arise in these new areas. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know it's a very long document. I would stick with that executive summary until you've got an interest in the other areas. But there is a lot of data there that I'm happy to share. But there is a lot of data there that I'm happy to share sources with or other information as well.
Action plans that you're going to be creating, will that involve municipalities as far as things that we would need to do or participate in to help obviously move that needle?
Yes, absolutely. So we had a mental health one recently. I don't think that included municipalities, but we are hoping to have one on housing soon. And I think that's a big space where municipalities absolutely play a part when we're thinking about planning and zoning and those kinds of things. So I will reach out to either Mr. Connor or you mayor to figure out who you feel like is there. And I believe Daniel Steins was the person who represented Harrisburg during the community planning council process back in 2019 and 2020.
To piggyback a little part of his question, when you guys are collecting this data, do you break it out by region within the counties? So we can actually see better what the councils you're looking at to understand our community better?
Yeah, absolutely. So I can send it, I've shared, I know with the racial equity work that you've got going on, I can share the survey with, so we ask individuals to submit their zip codes. So I can share the responses for those that are from Harrisburg and you can literally see all 46 questions and how residents who identify as living in Harrisburg responded to things from access to food, how many minutes of disability they're getting to, in the last year, have they had any housing situations where they stayed with someone else, lived in their car? I mean, it's the whole gamut. I think we had a little over 110 surveys from Harrisburg. Yes, absolutely.
And how was that promoted up?
So we pushed it out. We shared it with all the PIOs. And then we also share hard copies with local kind of organizations that work. So I think Logan, oh, she's there tonight. So I would have shared it with Logan to have that pushed out. They usually put it in the water bills or any community announcement newsletters they have and then on any social media platform. And then we actually put hard copies in a lot of our locations for individuals who may not have internet access would be seeking services so they can complete it there and then we get a paper copy back.
Yeah, I have more of a statement and a question at the end. So we have a sustainability group that is working diligently on air quality. And there goes some studies right now, and I know that you do have some data on that. Do you have someone available that can speak to our sustainability?
Possibly. So we do have an environmental health department there, but then we also have an epidemiologist who can help with data. You are right with air quality. The Robert Wilson County Health Rankings come out every year and Cabarrus County ranks as one of the lowest for air quality. It's like physical environment, we end up being like 99 of 100 counties. So yes, I'd be happy to make the connection to Crystal Swinger as our environmental health director, as well as Medji. She's epidemiologist, so they did helpful information.
Yeah, thank you so much. That group's working pretty hard on, we've got some meters out right now, so it's going to be awesome.
Yes, and I will say, Dr. Coyle, our new health director, was not able to join me tonight, but that is part of her mission as well as looking at our environmental health department, not to stay in the same lanes and traditional roles of just doing inspections and those kind of things, but looking at the wellness and the health of the actual environment that our residents are living in. Absolutely, thank you. All right, thank you for your time.
All right, I think my buddy Jim is going to be up for the next couple of conversations. Splashpad update, I have a thousand staff there.
Yes. Good evening, council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk a little bit about Splashpad. Andrew, can you be able to get it up there? Everybody's got, there it is. All right. So all of you know, obviously you're very well involved with the upgrade to Harrisburg Park. And one of those upgrades involved the brand new splash pad adjacent to the playground. And we know we had a hard time getting it open with a lot of reasons for maintenance and a lot of problems with that. But we did get it open running on May 27th with some great success. And so what I'm here tonight to do is to, as promised to you guys during budget, was to, about halfway through, try to give you guys an update as to where we stand. Use wise, financially, different things, give you a chance to look at some data and ask some questions. And the plan from there will be to, at the end of the season, do this again. And then come up with some recommendations to you folks in regards to where do we go from here? So if we go into the next slide, here we go. So we have a process that we're using for a pre-registration. And what we thought that would be important for was that it would guarantee parents, families, whatever, opportunity to get online and request space for a specific date and time. That would allow plans to be made and for them to guarantee that when they showed up, they would have space to use the splash pad. And we are using a platform called Ticket Leap, which is the same program we used for earlier this year for the Empress concert when we had to, had limitations set by the governor regarding attendance due to COVID. And typically, Ticket Leap has become quite a great tool for us to enable us to take registrations. They can pay on that app and get everything set. They get a little QR code to come turn it in. And in a recent survey that we put out after first week or two of that splash pads operation, 75% of our respondents rated the ticket process as a five out of five. So we're so far very happy with how that process is working. And go to the next one. We have a pre-registration versus checked in. So this is an important slide for you folks to take a look at, I think, in that we are looking at pre-registered residents. As you know, residents, it was requested and decided by council to not have any charge to use the splash pad by residents. And so what we've done is open up pre-registration for residents as well as non-residents. And what you'll find is our numbers, this is all through June 30th, folks. 5,585 pre-registered residents of those, only 21,254 checked in. We had 3,431 no-shows. So, you know, only about 40% of people who registered actually came to use it. And we think this, pretty obvious to us is that there's no skin in the game. They could go out and register and say, ah, something might come up better. We don't have to worry about it. And what's bad about that is that it took up to so many spots, so many spots for the splash pad. Now people get on for whoever and say, oh, you know, I want to come Saturday, but it looks like it's full. They don't come. We end up with less people than the facility can handle. And so that's something that we obviously will be taking a look at as we go forward. Pre-registered non-residents, and this shows you the opposite. 1,814 pre-registered, 1,749 checked in, 95% check-ins out of all the registrations. Again, we charged them $3 for non-residents. They haven't committed $3 for how many they sign up for. They all come. So that's just an interesting dichotomy of two separate instances there as far as how it's being used. The next slide goes to walk-ups. And in the walk-ups, we have residents and non-residents. So walk-ups basically are those who have not pre-registered or are just showing up hoping to use the facility. And we have both resident and non-resident involved there. And again, here we have residents, 2,120, and non-residents, 1,904. Attendance checked in and walk-ups. Residents versus non-residents, utilization, almost 8,000 people, 7,927 total attendance. Residents at 54% with 4,000 and change, non-residents, 3,653, 46%. A total average per day of 226 guests and total per slot, 65 guests. Time slots. So from May 27th through June 10th, we had what we call three waves. We had separate waves from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 1:30 to 4:30, and 5:00 to 8:00. Starting June 11th, we took that down to four waves of two hours each. And we really did that to accommodate more guests. We can take 100 per slot. This gives us another opportunity to go, 100 extra people go from 300 to 400 potential daily users. So June 11th, we went to 10 to 12, 12:30 to 2:30, 3 to 5, 5:30 to 7:30. The only difference on that is Sundays, we don't open until 12:30. So there's no 10:00 AM time slot for Sundays. Ticket sales. So online, $5,478. In the end, we have ticket lead fees of $412 and refunds of $534, refunds due to weather, mechanical issues, those kind of things. So in-person ticket sales, $9,528. So total online and in-person sales, $14,060, for an average of about $402 a day. And in that, we also have, in our registration booth, we also have a concession sales above there. Then the concession sales, just under $4,000 through June 30th. One of the things we found that we wanted to take a look at was a fee comparison. And so for the sake of safety comparison, what would be the impact to the facility financially and usability? If we changed from zero for residents and $3 for non to a dollar across the board for anybody who attended? Kannapolis down the road, I think, they charge $1.50 regardless. So we just figured using a dollar to see what the numbers would be. So for 14 weeks, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we have 400 openings per day and 98 days, so 39,200 available spots, 39,200. Which is a potential for a dollar a person, $39,200 in revenue at a dollar per person at full capacity. That's key, full capacity. All right, so that means every slot, every wave, full, right, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Current revenue, this is through June 30th, of course, as I mentioned earlier. We have so far $14,060. Our potential revenue in July and August, we still have those two months, 68 total days. If we were adding, going back to the last screen where it was said 226 guests and $402 of revenue per day, we have another potential $27,336 for the rest of the summer. This is again using the $0 and $3. And then, so the potential for $41,396 in revenue for the rest of this year at approximately 60% capacity. So what are we saying? We know we're only going at 60% capacity right now based on usability, based on people checking in and those that showing. So at that, we're still here with the $0 for residents to $3 for non. We're still at potential about $41,000 in revenue, which is more than if we went with just $1. Say we went to $1 next year. So this is just things that we will put together as we continue going forward, trying to come up with a plan for future use of the splash pad as far as financial compatibility with our budget and with the use of the facility. And the last slide I wanted to talk about. One of the things we did, as mentioned earlier, we did take out a survey earlier in the year, about a couple of weeks into our program, just to see what people were thinking and give us some ideas as to some adjustments. And so we did have some safety concerns at the slide. Slide is kind of a, it's a green, those who haven't seen it, don't pay attention much to it. It's a green berm covering the road and the kids are going up it, they're not going up the walkway path. And we had all kinds of kids slipping and falling because they weren't waiting for each other. So what we did is we added an attendant at the top of the slide. We now had somebody monitoring that. Make sure they were one at a time, they're not coming up the berm. We have safety concerns again around the slide. What we did was we had ordered and we're in the process of putting in a, what looks like a picture of a pirate ship rope that will go up as a barrier along the walkway, keep kids from going up and getting out of the slide underneath. And now I have to go to the walkway, come up the walkway. Time slots were too long. We got that from the survey. Many people thought three hours was way too long and we could see that, we observed it. By the last hour, you could see a lot of people leaving, attendance was down at the last hour or so. So what we did was we shortened those time slots, like I said earlier. Went from four three-hour, or three, three-hour waves to, or four three-hours, excuse me, three, three-hour waves and four two-hour waves. And then, large groups are taking a big portion of registration spots. So what we did is we limited to 10 tickets per person. No large group reservations permitted at this time. That's one thing I want to stress to you. We are in the process of trying to figure out, how can we handle daycares, childcares, the YFCA camp? Get them there without taking up all the slots so that we can, you know, leave some opening for the public. Sean and I and staff will be really researching that harder over the next, you know, few months, try to come up with a plan for that. So we can accommodate those groups a little easier. And the other thing we heard about, we knew was an issue, we didn't have enough of walk-up spots. When we first started registering, pre-registered, it was 75 pre-registration spots, 25 walk-ups. And then we ended up having a lot of those 75 registered filled out, couldn't take anymore. They wouldn't show and people would come up, we couldn't take them all because we could only have 100 people on the splash pad deck. So what we did is we changed that to 50 pre-registration, 50 walk-up. That seemed to accommodate a little bit better opportunities for those who just want to take a chance and come over. They may have gone to the playground, saw it open, go over and take a shot. So we did that and it seems to, all those things have seemed to work. Give us a lot more maneuverability in our day regarding getting as many kids and many families on the splash pad on a daily basis. So with that, I'll open up to you guys for questions on any of this or anything I can clear up or something you'd like to see from me sometime, hopefully at the September council meeting, that when we give you some final numbers for the year and final data. If something you think would be helpful, please let me know.
Jim, which wave are you finding is most people are signing up and attending?
I think it's pretty even. Sean's here, it's pretty even, right? I mean, it's kind of one any more than the other, I mean, right now. We thought maybe the, you know, the morning would be a little slower at first, but it seems to be fairly busy. And I think you get a lot of younger kids, younger families, daycare, childcare, just bringing over smaller groups.
Is there any time period that you might say, well, let's charge an extra fee for that particular timeframe to discourage it? Is there possibly, you'll say, one timeframe, one of the waves that should allow the groups? So those are possibly some things to look at. And so in September, we're going to go four waves all the way through September or to mid-September?
We're really looking for Labor Day. One of the problems we have is our staff members, a lot of them at school, my school is hard to get staff. Many of them have to go over our concession stands on weekends. So we're shooting for Labor Day, but one of the things Sean and I talked about today was, at least during a weekday, we probably still could extend it to September if the weather allows. So we're going to kind of wait and see what our staffing is like and how we can accommodate, you know, some extra hours if we can, that's for sure.
How flexible is the tool to, for those no-shows that aren't paying anything to put them back on the lower part of the list?
That's a good question, Sean.
Yeah, I don't think that there's, like, to penalize them moving forward from not registering.
If they don't show two times, then you're not going to surprise them though.
Like flag, like flag them. That's a really good question. That's something we can look at through Ticket Leap.
We haven't done that so far. What we do do is we only give them a 15-minute courtesy window. So when we started off, we weren't doing that. But now if they don't show up within the first 15 minutes, we open up their spot to a walk-up.
You know, it says on Ticket Leap when you register, if you don't show when you're at the beginning of your time slot, you're going to be warned that you may lose your spot. It doesn't say you will, it just says you may. So if we get up there and they're half hour late and we're already 100 people, well, they may have to be delayed to get out there. We haven't had to do that very much, so it hasn't been a problem. It's really been people just not showing.
So 15 minutes is kind of a long time to wait for them by the shower. I don't know, wait 10 minutes and...
And something we can...
Help plan with kids.
Jim, when you brought up Kannapolis, how comparable is Kannapolis to what we have?
Yeah, we're, I just mentioned that being a small today. You know, we're modern, it's, you know, we have a slide, a lot of it's very large. So ours is, you know, not to play it's brand new, ours is a little bit better. And I think ours is more popular right now for non-residents, I'm sure.
I'm just curious if there's one that's, you know, two or three years older than us nearby to kind of look at their usage. Kind of start predicting, you know, where we may be and shoot towards that predictability as opposed to kind of seeing little sticks right now. I think if there's something, I don't know how Blakeney does theirs, or whatever Blakeney, you know, shopping center, I believe it is, but I think it's just walk-up. Yeah, and you know, you talk about those larger groups, maybe you can start looking at Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, and that's large group days.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And we actually talked about even opening it a little bit early. Most of them start at 8 o'clock and maybe you can open them at 9 o'clock and get them in there. So there's definitely some opportunities. We just got to find out what the best work for everybody. And it is on our radar to research other area splash pads. And to include that for comparison, take a look at your data.
You know, my kids are, one's in college and one's in high school. They would never use it, but we did have the opportunity, the Fourth of July weekend, to bring in our niece and nephew. It was interesting to see their reaction. And as you said, after about an hour, hour and 15, it's kind of like, eh, you know, I'm done. But where you captured them back was the musical equipment on the playground. Turned them back in and they were just right into it. So, you know, it's a good program.
Yeah, it is. Thank you. It's the vision, and I said this during July Fourth, the vision of the splash pad and the playground, really play out, play well with each other. You know, and one of the things we found is if some of them have to wait, they would... And one of the things we found is if some of them have to wait, they will go over to the playground to wait. And the third process of trying to get, one thing we don't have on the splash pad is PA system and music, we need some of that. So we thought, while adding James, I'm working with James on that, is to see if we can pipe that same music and that same PA possibility out onto the playground without too much cost, and it looks like we might have a chance to do that. They, like I said, they play well off each other very well. Like I said, the vision for those two pieces were for the whole park, especially those two pieces, they, they really do complement each other very well.
So Jim, I understand there's not enough, excuse me, there's more demand than there is supply to use this thing.
Well, yes, because if you go on to preregister, many of the dates are closed. And so, but what turns out, turns out to be is that if you get a bunch of no-shows, then we end up having, you know, instead of a hundred, we have sixty, you know, we're having sixty-five or whatever, so, so yes, so it's a balance, but yes, we definitely have a larger demand than that.
So I'm trying to understand the logistics of the two hours. So you have that window, maybe you have a fifteen-minute grace period, but when it turns to noon, or whatever time it ends, you just clear the whole pad?
Yes.
So potentially, half of those people that were in that time slot have gotten bored and wandered off. I mean, my ten-year-old can do three hours, but my two-year-old is good for about fifteen minutes. So we're not capturing the people that have left in any shape or form, but we just clear it at the end of the period and say, next?
Yes, we clear that out, but the staff has been trained to take a look, do a quick count, let them in, even if there's an hour to go. So we don't, just because, you know, say if we open at ten, at ten-thirty, we don't say, okay, that's it, nobody's in there. At ten-thirty, we might have staff look out and say, eh, we only got sixty or sixty-five families can come up, we let them out, you know?
I wonder if it makes more sense just to say, everyone has a two-hour limit, and we don't have time slots. I don't know if you've ever been to a conference, you know, they make these really cheap bracelets, and when it's time for the main event or whatever after networking, a little red light goes on, right? And so I don't know, you just say, you got two hours, your red light's going to go on, and an attendant's going to politely ask you to leave, and then you can be at full capacity the whole time, potentially, and then take more people.
That was discussed when we were getting ready to open, is to maybe do a two-hour res- band or three, three hours as a matter of fact when we started. And we just, again, we're involving with a brand-new facility, so we said, let's try this, see how it goes. And that's something that's definitely on our radar, that's something we will consider. Again, we're going to give you a lot more data come September and really engage you, you know, engage advisory board, you guys, you know, our staff, administration, take everybody in on this thing to say, okay, what opportunities are we missing? What opportunities are we really taking advantage of?
I would just say, I'm not in favor of charging residents at all while they're still paying for the park, and I'm still paying for the park.
Yeah, and when we talked about a fee schedule back in the budget that, you know, I used to be saying, we did consider coming to you and say, hey, a dollar each or whatever, and we just felt like, we know it was a strong sentiment from council that you wanted to, you know, keep that at zero for residents, so let's give it a shot and see where we're at. You know, and we're, we're figuring out how to do that without much trouble. You've just got to figure out how to get people that, when they register, to show up, or, so they're not going to come, go to take, you know, get rid of your reservation so you can hold it up to somebody else, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do a little text, like, you know, reply, no, if you're, if you're not coming now, and open it back up.
That's something we can work with in Ticketlead to look at.
I mean, it's disappointing that residents are not showing up in that amount.
But we also think, well, I'm pretty sure we're getting residents who might look three centers in a row. You know, and then, then, you know, they don't show up to any of them, you know? But they find something bad, or a thunderstorm pops up, hour, done, you know, so.
Nobody's going to log in again to tell you they canceled, but they, they'd respond, you know, to a quick text, I'd say.
Great point, that's something we'll definitely consider, thank you for that.
Thanks, Jim.
What's your cost of that dollar or three dollars, you know, just to take from the processing, is there a fee there?
Yes, I put it in there, in June, we paid four hundred sixteen dollars, I think it was, if I go back, I mean, about four hundred twelve-dollar fees on that Ticketlead opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and one of the other things that we, we will get to you, I may not have it in September, but we'll have it very quickly, we hope that in September, is, you know, operations costs too. What's it costing us to run it on a daily basis, seasonal basis? And also, we, we talked to Malia and I school today about return on investment. Where, you know, we know a lot of money went into the development of the facility, you know? Can we reasonably expect to get our money back in ten years, twenty years from it? I don't know, you know, this depends on where we go and what our cost of operation is. But you will, you folks will get cost of operation, return on investment, and we'll try to make sure you get as clear a picture as possible.
You have any questions? All right, let's move to Farm Mill Deconstruction.
Okay. James, can you do that up there for me?
To be able to switch power points.
Yeah, try it.
Maybe stop your screen chair and then try it again.
Zoom, James.
He's zooming behind you. I wish you did Microsoft Teams, right?
James, it's worth it, it's waiting for.
Where'd that go?
I said. Thank you, James. Okay, Farm Mill Deconstruction Project, as all of you know, Farm Mill has been on your radar for quite a while, and a couple of weeks ago, we were able to finally start the process of getting that thing down and salvage as much as possible. So I've put together some information here for you guys to take a look. So, funding was placed into CIP for this week, we wanted to deconstruct Farm Mill and goals. It's, as I've been told, we were basic, because I wasn't here at the time, but was to save as much original building materials and mill equipment as possible for future park projects. Salvage materials where size would allow will be stored in weather-type container, large objects where feasible, moved and stored in safe areas inside other town parks. And then, final goal would be to use those materials in a manner that would serve well the memory of the mill and its operation. So deconstruction planning, the original intentions were to deconstruct the structure piece by piece. Potential contractors were identified and contacted in February of this year earlier, and all agreed that the structure was too far gone to accomplish a piece-by-piece process. Deconstruction would then entail bringing the structure to the ground as carefully as possible, salvageable pieces picked and saved by hand. So that contract was awarded to Miles McClellan Construction, and they had a recon, pre-deconstruction meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-second, and proceeded with the deconstruction project the following day, the twenty-third, and completed a week later. I'm going to show you some pictures here of a couple of different timed areas. What I wanted to show here is how far the building had gone south, just in the course of ten to twelve years. You see the picture on two thousand nine of the side, where you see the vines are starting to kind of creep up around it, but it's still kind of solid and not in bad shape. And then you look down at the bottom, lower screen of the old two thousand nine. And again, you can see it much clearer, you can see that it's in much better shape as far as, you know, that is in good shape. But maybe at that point, the piece-by-piece salvation could have occurred. Instead, out in two thousand twenty-one, you can see the picture to the right with the vines and the trees actually come up through it and kind of taken over that whole side. And then the bottom slide, down picture on the slide, you'll see the machinery getting ready to just kind of give that just a little push. And just so you know, the building itself was being held with a rope and a chain to one of the trees to keep him from going, go over. Ted, Ken Cren, I always forget, I don't know if I can say his name, Ted had gone over with some of these guys and actually secured that a few years back because it was pretty dangerous. And that's one thing I will, I want to review with you guys, is that, and I wasn't here for the contractors meeting, but one of the contractors specializes in piece-by-piece removal, even they said that once you started pulling from the top, that thing was going to go, and it would have been a safety issue. So really kind of changed the vision as to how we're going to get that thing safely to the ground and still be able to maintain and salvage some of the pieces. Another screen here with some pictures, two thousand five and six, you can clearly see the stones up, up inside the mill, in good shape there. And then again, the picture below that with the little lead to a outbuilding still there, now that was ended up being gone as it went forward. Then you go back to two thousand, this year, two thousand twenty-one, and you can see again all the vegetation inside going up through the, through the bottom, all the way up through the sides. And again, not in a position where we could really do it the way that everybody kind of hoped. And so in that, in that, the salvage items that we found, if you take a look at some of these, you'll see some of the wheels, metal wheels, equipment used to run the lines in that, in that first picture. Right behind it is the old, is the thresher, and you'll see a better picture of that later. But that's, that came out really as a whole piece, which we were very happy with. And then to the right of that, you'll see a bunch of the piers, you know, because the mill was so near to the river, it had to be up as much on the piers as possible to keep the water off of wood. And so we see, we salvaged, I'd say a dozen to fifteen of those, all in very good shape. And then you look to the third picture, you'll see more of the equipment used to run the mill. And then the fourth picture on the far right is a bunch of the headers and beams used in some of the planks and ceiling headers, those kind of things. And we've got a bunch of those in really very good shape. And of course, over in Harris Depot, in the old corridor, I believe that is, you'll see we, we were able to get six old millstones out of there in very good shape. Very pleased about that, and also pleased that we can get them someplace out of the weather, they're under the lead to there. And then to the picture next to this, that thresher we were talking about, I met with Ted today, he was telling me a little bit about that. Ted's got a lot of history about the mill and other things here in Harrisburg. And he said, the big, the best part of that piece is that the thresher is in such great shape, the actual blaze part. That's what's really valuable. But then looking at the casing, the casing's really in good shape too, just will have to be a little bit rebuilt in the middle, but that whole piece should be able to be salvaged, what we do with it will depend on where we go design-wise in the future. And so future plans for a project, you know, foster place by council in this year's FY twenty-two, to work with design professionals to study the feasibility of developing a new park on Farm Mill site as well as alternate opportunities for use of salvaged materials. So the tentative timeline, and I, and this is, just wanted to stress to you all, that this is, everything works perfectly, committee comes together, everything, you know, this is kind of an aggressive timeline. This could take a couple of three months more depending on what we end up finding. But I wanted to stay aggressive, we've got some momentum built up with Farm Mill and some interest, and I thought, now's the time to strike, keep it going if we can. And so the, the plan for me, I put together is, in sometime in August, to form a committee of Parks and Rec staff, town administration, hatch members, and interested community representatives, discuss future plans and begin development of an RFP to seek out design for this project. What do we hope for them to come up with? Well, we hope to get some kind of consensus and vision of something in particular, whether it be a park on that site, whether that won't work, we don't know if that's feasible, that we want to move it to another site, you know, whatever that is. And get, you know, different opinions, you know, obviously, somebody from, somebody or two from council, town administration, Lee and Rob and the gang, Parks and Rec staff, Hatch Committee, get everybody together and community representatives, just sit down at a regular business, start coming up with ideas. And then the idea, hopefully, if, if we can move it along and come up with a common vision that quickly, which, you know, if you put nine or ten people in a room, that may not be that easy, but maybe it is. And then if it is, you know, get it to you guys sometime in September, and share those RFP details. What are we looking for? You guys can see and have your input as a council, you know, what is our vision as a group? Does it mesh with what you guys find is something we should shoot for? And then hopefully, it goes well, release that RFP and start receiving some bids on that. And then in October, maybe accept the bids for that design and set up some kind of a project timeline. And then November, begin the feasibility study with the chosen design teams. It really, that could end up being, December could be in January, but I really feel strongly that we want to get that thing moving so that we get a design team in there where the vegetation's gone, a good look at it, really kind of see, you know, what are our possibilities in there, and also at other parks. And then ultimately, the best thing that can happen as far as I'm concerned is us have a project ready to go for you guys for, come budget season for next year. And, you know, Councilman Patrick had stated back in budget time that we may be foreseeing a possibility of some grant possibilities for shovel-ready projects. We better have a shovel ready if we want to jump on that, so that's the plan. Again, it's a little aggressive, I know we put together aggressive projects in the past that we haven't necessarily hit. And so I want to be careful, so I want to stress to you that we will make sure it's a very deliberate, we thought that was a good word to use, a very deliberate approach to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves, but we'll make sure we cross every T and dot every I, and make sure that everybody's on board with that. Because we know it's important to a lot of people, we know it's important to the history of Harrisburg, and we just felt like that was a place to go as far as a timeline. And again, try to put that together and see if we can move. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys with any questions you might have, or any input, or any advice as far as, you know, this being my, probably my first full project that I will lead for this town, and so, open up the questions if you have.
Jim, I'm glad, when Ian and I came on board last year, we started with the money, trying to get it in last year's budget. So I'm glad to see that we're able with this budget to take a piece of property that is one of the last heritages in Harrisburg. I know somebody the other day mentioned to me about pictures that show the old mill, and Sean, I don't know how many show it in actually good functioning order, but at this point, because we are starting the project, can we put out there to the public, does any of your family have any pictures of the old mill that we can start to get ready? I know Mr. McCatharine, I think he has some pictures, right? Let's see if we can get some more pictures out there because this is one of the last important heritage. And so, thank you, and was there any problem storing it?
No, right now, we do have, we got most of it, we got quite a bit of the tin roof, which is nice. That's in the, we have a storage container out there with a lot of the sideboards, four boards that would fit in there. The bigger stuff, we are in the process, we're going to clear the vegetation around that thresher and also around the headers. And we're going to cover those really good with tarps, and we're going to close it off with some fencing, just to make sure it's safe. Because that's going to be there for a little while. One of the concerns we had, and I was speaking with Councilman Patrick about this a month or so ago, is get it off the ground. Because the ground will tear that up and we'll lose a lot of that stuff. So the goal is to get it all off the ground here in the next few weeks, and get it protected and see where it goes.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, sorry, do we have any access to that, I mean, to that space? Is that catalog now, or is it, so in your designs or something that's going to be in that space also, or is it just Farm Mill or?
So, so speaking for myself and other people who've kind of shadowed us around, I would love to see a, a perpetrator that would take advantage of restoring a, some kind of a shelter using that material, but also taking some of the equipment and using those piers for like a historical trail, talking about the mill and how important it was to that time, time period here in Harrisburg. But also, it puts up right against the Rocky River, it's all the way there. We walked down there this morning, it was really interesting, I hadn't been down through there, Ted took us through the path and got us down there. And inside the, down in the river is a dam, and also some turbines that are actually still in the water. And then you'll see where there's piers coming up through the woods, where the lines came through, where they brought the water and everything up through. That's all still, I mean, it's in pretty good shape, and if we get it cleared out, we'll get that, we, how we utilize that. And also, if possible, maybe some kind of recreational opportunity. And also, if, if possible, maybe some kind of recreational opportunity, kayak, kayak.
Is there an opportunity for a kayak launch there?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the neighbor across the street, when we were in the process of deconstructing the mill, he came over and said that their kids and families that pretty regularly park there go down in with their canoes and they're launching their town. And so they go down, they pick up at the next bridge, I guess. So, so that's an opportunity and, you know, we'll have to, you know, see where, how that all shakes out and, you know, what we got. But it's about, what was four point one acres, I believe. And so it's a nice sized site, we'd have to get some parking. You know, some, if we're going to put a shelter there, we'd have to have some kind of bathroom, you know, comfort facilities. But there is a sewer available, it runs right through it. So we're in pretty good shape there. I mean, again, that's my vision, you know, nine other people, 10 other people, whatever makes, had a better, a whole better idea for it. But I, I would like to see some kind of a historical opportunity, but also a recreation opportunity. I don't want to go back like we talked about the, the discourse. Two opportunities in one park, place to go get some, some mystery and relax and have a little picnic. And also if you want to go down and launch kayak or just maybe a small little trail around there.
We know, you know, we've been trying to acquire land of that space anyway for the trails to go up through there. So, yeah, i- if the, if there was a kayak launch, I think that would go. Well, now we've got some issues on acquiring some land of that space already.
Yeah, Lee spent some time with me today to talk to me about along from Farm Mill Park and some of the tracks we already own around, around the river. I was not even aware that we had that. That was kind of a fun thing because it's, you know, Churchill Farms Greenway is pretty close to us taking over. They're close to getting that stuff done. Then we're going to get started kind of rebooting Beck Creek. I think we have a meeting Wednesday to get that going again. And so we'll have Beck Creek, Beck Creek on the, on the, on dock. And maybe we can get the next greenway, you know, attack that area. I know we'll have some, some easiness probably put out there to get, to get it, to finish it up. But, you know, we own a good chunk of that already. So I think that's something, you know, it'll, it'll take some maneuvering, I think, and some, you know, getting with some H O A's and talking to them, but you know, hopefully we have some success with that.
Any other?
Just one thing, Jim, I would say, you know, take this advice or not, just my, my opinion. But when you're writing the, the RFP or the RFQ or whatever it is, I, things designed by committee rarely work out. So I would say try to make it broad and tell them what your goals are. For instance, preserve history and reuse the materials. May not want to say we want you to build a shelter out of the remaining materials because you're likely to get really good creative design professionals that will think of something that you have thought of. Take it or leave it, but make it broad enough and tell them what your goals are and let them be creative and come up with something.
They, they took a, a grant writing course, a course of my former employees. And we're talking about RFPs and that was building block number one is RFPs. If you're going to RFP for design, let them be designers. Because we're not designers, if we're designers, why do we need that?
Right.
So, so yeah, that's great advice and I will certainly follow that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Doug, and added grant collaboration effort for Philford East Council.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, everybody. Well, I can definitely introduce myself without a slide. I am Monica Fuller Johnson. I am the owner and operator of the Real U LLC. And the REAL stands for realizing every advantage in life. I am a certified prevention specialist, an integrated healthcare manager, a tobacco treatment specialist and a community organizer. I say all that to say that my role is prevention in the community. And I start with youth, then families, and then the community. That is the impact that we'll have. So my ask today is, I'm asking that the youth, the Harrisburg Youth Council become a community partner with the Real Youth Collaborative so that we can work on some of those goals of the needs assessment that Marcella spoke about earlier. I couldn't have picked a better day to come to present to you all. So the, the next slide, please. So how will the Harrisburg Youth Council be a collaborative? What I'll need from you all, whether we're funded or unfunded by this grant, oh, thank you. Whether we're unfunded or funded by this grant that I would like for, to work with the youth council so they can identify what has been the impact of COVID nineteen on their community? The population that is most impacted by COVID nineteen and the change of opinions and behaviors related to substance use and mental health. The youth population will be ages twelve to twenty five. With this grant funding, they can receive for free youth education programs and parent education programs. The youth will be allowed to be creative and innovative. They'll be peer to peer counselors and educators. And what I would need from the council is a letter of commitment and support that the youth council is willing to collaborate. This grant is funded by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The goal of the award is to provide supplemental funding for prevention of substance misuse and its harmful effects on children and families, strategies as related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So prior to the pandemic, people are already experiencing and using, experimenting with drugs, experiencing symptoms of mental health. The pandemic only amplified that, made those uses and misuses larger. I can't, I don't have the data, but they talked about the sales in alcohol increased over seventy percent. Because why? What was there to do? So people instead of working, they're at home drinking or socializing in the home. And part of their social is alcohol. Now what did our children see? Because if you're twenty one and over, you can use alcohol. And we trust that you use it responsibly. But children have to know what that means and they have to be able to give that message to their peers. So that's what part of this grant would do. And prevention, for you all who don't know, prevention and early intervention efforts, based decision making. So prevention is stopping or delaying the onset of substance use disorders and to promote the prevention and treatment of mental health disorders. So we'll be using the eight dimensions of wellness, which is a broad concept of wellness, being healthy in many dimensions of our lives. Again, thinking about that community, community needs assessment. If that's what adults are surveying, what about our youth? And if we could start to educate them early, then that changes their decision making, the outcomes of our community. So that includes the emotional, physical, occupational, intellectual, financial, social, environmental and spiritual parts of a person. We call that whole health. Did I cover everything? These dimensions are interconnected and one dimension builds on another. So for example, the homeless population rate is, I mean, it's extremely high. So if you're thinking about you don't have a safe place to sleep or go home to, how is that going to impact the way you learn in school? How does your education impact the, the job that you're going to have? Or whether you're going to get a formal education or not? So example is when we worry about money, debt or being able to afford what we need, we sometimes experience anxiety. That's an emotional issue. This can lead to medical problems, which will be your physical health and trouble at work, occupational. So when this happens, we may even question our own sense of meaning and purpose. That's your spiritual wellness. So some of the activities that the youth will be engaged in is the ability to incorporate how to cope with family stressors related to COVID nineteen, healthy ways of coping. Cannabis education, the ability to address the prevention of THC consumption. And there are numerous ways to consume THC. All of them are illegal in North Carolina. So they need to know that because they will argue and debate that I'm not smoking it, it's an herb. How many of you have heard this before or used it before? Okay, so those are the terms that our children, but when we educate them on the effects of THC on the brain and their decision making, it changes the outcomes. So also ensuring referrals to the mental health services and/or treatment services. This can reduce family stressors and just talks about again, the, the increased use of substance use during COVID nineteen. So we want to expand our community partnership with you all, specifically the Harrisburg Youth Council, because we, again, I want the youth engagement and peer to peer. They know what they talk about, they know how to educate, they know what messages work. So they have to be a moving part of this active participation. Everybody on the youth council does not have to be a part of the Real Youth Coalition, but I would like them to be. So some of the curriculum that we could use for education, family unity, community outcomes as well as recovery action plan, youth mental health first aid and whole health action management. All these are evidence based curriculums. In summary, receiving the block grant will provide resources to Cabarrus County that could drastically affect youth ages twelve to twenty five by reducing the risk associated with mental health disorders, drug misuse and abuse. And this collabora- collaboration would increase the likelihood of a stronger and healthier community. Any questions?
So is this grant a matching grant?
It is not. This grant is, the award is up to, they'll be given twenty three awards. Up to one hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. For twenty months. The length of the project will be from August second, twenty twenty one to March fourteenth to twenty twenty three. So nine months of that time is building community capacity. So that is getting other collaboratives on board as well, other community partners.
How is this, so when we look at like the public schools, they have the DARE program. How is this different from the education that goes into the DARE program? Is it completely a whole different scenario or?
The DARE program focuses on younger ages. Yeah, so that's one distinctiveness. The other is funded. So there would be more DARE programs if there was more funding. So this grant specifically asks for the impacts of youth drug misuse and prevention of COVID nineteen pandemic. Yeah, so those are some of the differences. We're all trying to do the same thing, but your funding tells you how to do it. So that's a great question.
Forget my ignorance, is the youth council a formal board? Is it a formal board?
Yes.
Okay. So have they gone through and sent a recommendation up and?
And the question, they sent it to me. And we sent it to present to the board.
So I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm just confused on the ask.
So the ask is for a letter of support.
Support for them to go get a grant?
For them to be in collaboration with the LLC, with the real LLC, to be a part of that grant proposal.
Oh, I see. So this will span probably multiple boards, this is crossing.
Yeah, because not only can youth council participate, but also our sustainability and parks and rec, because we can collaborate in different ways to help build that collaboration and community support around drug misuse.
It's a Cabarrus County grant, is that correct?
It's a state grant.
State grant.
So who's actually going to do the applying for it if we give a letter?
I will.
Okay.
I will.
Yeah, you know, it's going to be me.
Yeah. But also I want to just reiterate that whether we've received the funding or not, I still would like to be able to collaborate with the youth council.
Is this the American's Care funding that it's just recently been raised?
I have a feeling, but that's not what it's called. But I, I have a feeling that it's attached to those dollars. So again, the formal name of the grant is the Substance Abuse Prevention Block Grant Supplemental Funding for COVID nineteen Relief.
Sounds like the government grant.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is funded by the North Carolina Department of Human Health and Services and the Division of Mental Health Substance, Substance Use and Developmental Disabilities.
So presumably you would, you would have some sort of fee for your work.
The block grant would pay me to be the program manager.
Okay. And which is fine, I mean, Samaritan after all, but I want, I don't know what kind of trouble, if any, we would get in. And maybe it's a question from Rich based on having, having a vendor that could potentially, I, you know, I don't know what your fee is, please don't tell us, but having a vendor, potential vendor or for a formal board, it could be over that thirty thousand dollar threshold for soliciting, requesting solicitations for multiple people? Just a question, you don't have to answer it now, but.
Yeah, I think we need to get your information and dive into that, but I can get there and bring that back to council.
And I, and I do want to clarify that I would not be working for the board.
Right.
It would be collaboration, it would be a community collaboration.
Yeah, I don't know, but it sounds like a great idea to me. I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in trouble. And then I just have one final question. Do you address at all potential addiction to social media? Because my ten year old has it.
And that's normal. So what they would do would address it. So how can we be less dependent on social media? I don't think it's going anywhere, I'm not going to tell anybody that. But that is something that the youth can address because that may not be a form of addiction for them. But getting them to see that, getting them to their own answers is what I would provide. I would guide them to their own answers. We don't have all the answers as adults, of course, right? We know nothing.
So you said you would work with various boards. So what, what, what would the sustainability board expect? What would the park and rec board expect? Are you going to spend so many hours each month with each of those advisory boards?
Well, if they're going to be one of our community partners, then they would have to come to the coalition meetings, yes, to say hello. We'll send a representative to the coalition.
And the coalition meetings are going to be held where and how often? And it will include all of, all of Cabarrus County?
Oh, everybody will be welcome to join the coalition. No fees attached to joining the coalition. We want active participation in a community. So the people who live in a community know the community. So another big guidance again would be that community needs assessment. So this grant allows nine months of capacity built. So all the things that you're asking, we'll be able to as a collaborative answer them.
So is there going to be a mechanism that measures the success of this program? And what is that mechanism and how will it be administered?
So also out of that grant funding, I can pay for an evaluation. So that formally says and tracks what changes have been made from individuals. How did we reduce misuse? And how did we reduce stressors? And how did we connect people to resources for mental health? All of that will have to be measured. And the government is not just going to give you money for nothing. So, you know, grants are contracts.
And you're coming to us on your own or someone approached you to come to us?
On my own, I've been doing this work for over ten years and I got excited that there is a grant that's funded for it because I've been employed to do it for, you know, an hourly wage. And I had to do what they asked. And so I feel like this is the opportunity for our youth to really show their education and make change. And there is funding attached to it. So that takes off a lot of the limitations of what they want to see.
And the last question, I didn't see anything in your presentation, a list of references or anything that we could look to see what you have done to this point?
Uh, well, I can get that, get that for you. Yep, I can definitely get that for you. If you like a resume, resume of some sort.
I don't know, is resume just references to see your work that you have done and with other communities or other?
Absolutely, I can do that.
Ms. Fuller Johnson, you want to advise the entire council who you work for?
I really don't, but since you brought it up.
I mean, that would help bring perspective.
Oh, okay. So I, I work for the current MCO, which is Cardinal Innovations Healthcare. And we still do preventive work within Cardinal Innovations Healthcare. So Cardinal Innovations Healthcare is your public health insurer for behavior health.
And that's part of PMOT or was part of?
It was PMOT, they changed the name, so yes.
Okay.
Yes, so should I go on? Okay, so your public health insurance is your Medicaid program. And so Cardinal Innovations manages that for this county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would you be making the same presentation to the cohort or is it just you're seeking Harrisburg?
Well, because I am familiar with council. Well, because I am familiar with Councilwoman State and Williams. She was one of the contacts. I was like, oh, I can collaborate with the Harrisburg Youth Council. And so we've done some collaboration in the past around tobacco cessation, right, and vaping? And so the education around that. So she's just one of the ones that I came, uh, that came to mind. And she said, okay, well, you have to present and ask. So yeah, I'll be doing a lot of asking around the community.
I mean, because when you're explaining the grant and the region, the all the data that you're looking at, seems like it would be beneficial for the whole county.
It is.
So to approach, you know, so we would be in a partnership with Concord, potentially Cadaples, so that we can all benefit from?
Absolutely. Yes. That's a yes, if you're asking me, will I be doing that? Yes.
So it sounds like we have a strong support from all councils.
It sounds like that to me as well.
Well, I mean, when we're looking at those things, you only get one shot at these kids. I mean, and if you can catch them, you know, younger before they make mistakes, the better. You're, you're not going to solve the problem 100%, but you give them the tools to make the right decisions.
That's right. So when we look at that ages 12 to 25, that's what we're talking about, brain development and independence and decision-making. Around that age is when you start to, yes, you can sleep over with your friend. Yes, you can go to the movie theater. But I mean, be able to trust you to do that. That's why the parenting education is important too.
I would like to make a motion to provide a letter of, of support for this program.
Got a motion on the floor?
Oh, question.
Yeah, good.
I'm going to be supporting that.
Okay.
Uh, you guys. Anyone?
The question I had was that he had presented a question to Lee. Do we need to wait for him to find that out and come back or?
Can we add that to the motion? That you would loudly do the diligence on the dollars and such. Just like.
Like point.
Uh, Rick, will you add that to your second?
Yes, that's fine.
All the members say aye?
Aye.
Put his name. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go to public comment. Uh, we'll let the online people queue up by raising your hand in the chat window. And for those in the room, anyone wishing to address counsel, please come to the audio. Play your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's, uh, my name's Mike Weaver. And I live at 10331 Black Locus Lane with a Charlotte address in the city of Harrisburg. So to the mayor and the council members, first, I'd like to thank you all for your support you have had for the whole Holcomb Woods community as it continues to grow. You have helped us with the storm waters mitigation issues we've had in the developer as well as the planting of trees along our streets. And that is ongoing. And recently, there was some help by putting up speed limit signs. And this is your speed flashing signs in our community. And what I want to address is the speeding that goes on for two reasons. One, we have two streets that are three quarters of mile long and one is a mile long with no speed mitigation measures other than a speed limit sign. That's all they have. And the occasional signer who have said this is a neighborhood and not a race track. In a 2004 study that was produced in the American Journal for Health Safety, it was found that children who live within a block of a street with a speed hump, which I'd like to call a safety hump, had a 50 to 60% reduction in being hit by a car while they were going to the bus stop or where they were playing along their roads. The study also said that collisions with cars were the number one cause of death for children ages five to 14, primarily boys five to nine. So go figure, five to nine-year-old on a bicycle. Now, I know there are concerns about speed humps in neighborhoods. One is the cost. It costs to put them in and it costs to maintain them. There's also the consideration for emergency vehicles and what they have to do when they're going through a road that has a safety hump in it. And as one city employee mentioned to me, there's also the consideration about slowing snow removal whenever snow removal has to go over a speed hump. So what I'd like to do tonight is I'd ask the council to carefully consider placing speed humps in the Holcomb Woods community. Now, the community probably will be turned over to the city of Harrisburg for another year. So there's time to look into it. But what we do know is that only speed humps in a community increases the safety for our children. They are better than a speed sign because they are self-enforcing. Unlike a speed sign, it just blow through that speed hump. And we do know that the speed hump doesn't need to be that bone-jarring wheel alignment wrecking that we probably have driven over before. They now have ways to make these speed humps lower in profile so that it reduces a car's speed without causing a car to have to come to almost a complete stop, a complete stop. So I thank you for your time. And I offer, as a community member, if you would consider that, I would be glad to serve on any committee or board that does any research into that. Because quite frankly, it's, it's my community and so it's important to. So I'd ask if, if we don't consider in your favor, would you still be willing to serve the community? Because we look for people to serve this community area. Certainly. Thank you.
So we do have a speed help policy. I'm not sure that was, I mean, you do have that requirements associated with when we can do that inside of the, the clubs as well?
Yeah, and from what I understand is that the city of Harrisburg does not permit the use of speed humps.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some components that somebody.
Yeah, we do have a speed on policy that lays out the procedures that you have to go through in order to request that if you want to, Rob, give me the specifics about that policy.
Or just we can get with my, I think we have information, what I said, that policy and any information. So he knows kind of where we are today.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. These are people that are, are engineers that are on it. We do have policies. Um, I'm not familiar with the study that you mentioned, but we do have tons of studies on what traffic calling methods work best. From HWA and Transportation Safety Board what types of, of speed humps are available. And part of our policy is going under revision basically to look at our community buy-in on that street. There's many people that, just many people that do not. So if you'd like to keep buying certain things like that on, on the roads or don't know. But we'll get with the, we'll go over all the options.
Okay, it's great. Is, when you talk about that, is there the option now in the European states that do it? And that's only in the cities that started, they move out the planners to where the road becomes condensed and almost forces you to slow. Yeah, or hit the plan rush. So push over, back over, and they're staggered throughout the road. So it's not, you know, this.
Yeah, there's something to that. And almost all studies to, would show road narrowing has a much greater effect. The lessening speed than the speed humps. Uh, speed humps do have an effect on it for the usual very narrow in length. So we're talking, um, you know, less than hundreds of feet on, on each side of them. So you may get a couple of lots that are good. But generally, the speeding that we see in these neighborhoods, that really are extreme speed. They're not people going 35 to 25. These are people like 50 in neighborhood streets. And generally, younger people, people that don't mind ramping their cars on, on things like this. So that's what, that's what we've seen in the studies and that's what I'd like to talk with Weaver about. You know, certainly want to exercise all our options if we can to reduce speed in the neighborhoods. But I think there's better options available to us.
Yeah, and I, and I think one thing to consider is this study is from 2004, well before the proliferation of drivers compelled to use their cell phones while they're driving. And in my neighborhood, I see that as pretty common, as people are racing down the road. And then finally, why the moon pie?
That's a good question.
Well, if you look at the moon pie, there are two pieces that support the squishy middle. One outside is you, the city council, because you make decisions. The other side are the folks who work for the city. Who know about how much money it costs, what are better ways than maybe a speed hump? And the middle is the squishy middle, where there isn't a perfect answer. So enjoy the moon pie and good luck in being the solace of the squishy middle of the moon.
Before you sit down, Mr. Weaver, are any of those roads coming from Cabarrus Woods and the Holcomb Woods?
Yes, Cabarrus Woods down Starwood onto Lairwood. But from Starwood to into our community, there's a short distance before there's a stop sign. And recently, the sheriff came out with unmarked cars and helped out with those who didn't understand what those red signs meant.
But Cabarrus Woods was able to get a stop sign put in to help stop there, that, that stop, bus stop right there at Lairwood, I think.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah.
And so that, that has helped, right, with speeding?
That has helped in their community.
But not in yours?
Not in our community is, it's the distance from Plaza Extension Road down Black Locus Lane until it gets to the Lairwood Black Locus Lane intersection, which is three quarters of a mile. Then you have the Black Locus Lane Paper Birch Drive, which, when fully completed, is a mile of just open roadway. And families are busy. They're rushing here and there. I, I perfectly understand that. But we're, it's, once that community is completely full and there's a young child out on a bicycle, I would hope that nothing would happen, but statistics show that it's likely. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your.
Anyone else wish to, to whistle in the bell before I do the phone or I do the buzzer?
Yeah, basically mine is still on speed outside, but mine is not as eloquent. Mine is freaking. My name is Jim Far. I live at 6031 E. T. Howard Court here in Harrisburg. Basically, I don't need a speed bump. I just want to ask, are we enforcing the speed limit? I live on Rock River Passage between Moorhead and Rebert. Rebert, now you know, it has an internet connection by Lyles Boulevard to 85. And it's basically one of the few roads to get across the track. Once they leave, the light, by the time you get past Food Line, when they make that turn, when that come out of Rock River Passage, they're doing 45, 50 miles an hour. Same as coming here down Moorhead. By the time I pull out there, they're doing 45, 50 miles an hour. I have not seen any, I just want to know, are we basically have any methods? Or we have a program to stop or look out for speeders?
Absolutely do. I could let our.
Because I haven't seen, I, I mean, I'm just asking. I haven't seen. And I, I, I drive everywhere every day. So.
As well, our officers check into that.
Okay.
I'm going to jump to the sound and see if anybody else in the room can come back in a second. So I'm going to go to the first one that popped up on the list, Derek Hodges or Tina Hodges? You guys can unmute or whoever's on the phone can unmute. You have the four. You can say your name and address.
Hear me?
Yes.
Tina Hodges, 3606 Sherrill Lane. So being a mother of two young children and an educator myself, it was concerning to me to find out that school choice is being limited, dare I say, prevented. Many may not be aware that there was a new charter school coming to Cabarrus County called the Dogwood Classical Academy. It is a Hillsdale College Barney Charter School providing a tuition-free classical education to all students regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic background. It is the first and only school of its kind in North Carolina. And there are only 25 other schools like it in the country. The school model has a proven track record across many states and demographics, and its value is known to both families and communities. Their goal is to develop virtue and wisdom in engaged citizens. However, the public should be aware of the questionable means that the Cabarrus County Commissioners are using to prevent this academy from succeeding in its implementation here in our county. So I would like to read a summary of what has transpired between Dogwood and Cabarrus County Commissioners. And this is just my understanding of what happened. Cabarrus County is showing inordinate and untimely interest in a property on Milestone Avenue that it has ignored for years. On February 15th, 2021, the Cabarrus County Commissioners confirmed that Cardinal owned the property located at 4855 Milestone Avenue, free and clear with no liens. The property could be sold and the county was not interested in the property. It had not been, it had been unused since 2017. Between April and May of 2021, the county submitted a letter of intent and then offered 4.8 million for the property, which had a tax value over 16 million. Cardinal asked for a higher amount and the county responded with an offer of 5.3 million. By June 2021, the county and Cardinal cannot come to an agreement on the contract language, as Cardinal did not want the sale of the property to be obstructed by any future action by the state. On June 14th, Dogwood Classical Academy toured the building and two days later submitted a significantly better offer. And on June 18th, 2021, Cardinal contacted Cabarrus County and told them of the offer. The county did not counter. Dogwood completed a title search and the property was free of liens and solely owned by Cardinal. In light of knowledgeable counsel to be wary, Dogwood considered the facts, including quality of the facility, its location, and their own timeline to open, and decided to, to proceed with the purchase. The contract was signed on June 25th, 2201, and earnest money deposited on June 30th, 2021 by Dogwood. On July 7th, 2021, Cardinal and Dogwood were sent a notice of condemnation on the property by the county as the first step in seizing the building via eminent domain. Immediately upon going under contract with Cardinal, Dogwood invested substantially to hire an architect and contractor to supply blueprints and other services. Dogwood has made, has asked the county to stop the action of eminent domain because the property was for sale on the open market and the county had no lien or legal obligation from Cardinal to relinquish the property. By legal standards, the deal was a standard commercial real estate transaction. The county lost the bid in a legitimate process and has resorted to illegitimate means to acquire the milestone property. It's worth noting here that the state of North Carolina and Cabarrus County were lax in oversight of their contracted LME MCOs. Secondarily, there is, there is and was no law or other stipulation written which disallowed Cardinal from buying or selling property. Furthermore, Dogwood Classical Academy's commitment to serving families in Cabarrus is an advantageous service to the county, supporting the health, stability, and success of its community members for future generations. Dogwood has received state authorization through an arduous public application and interview process and has taken all the appropriate and legal steps to purchase the property to house the school. The county is using its power to appropriate the property after their negotiations with Cardinal broke down and they lost to a higher bidder in an open and competitive process. There are other buildings and land parcels available to satisfy the county's wants. In contrast, the milestone site has been legally purchased due to its suitable location to serve existing communities and new residents flooding into the county. Additionally, we suggest that wittingly or unwittingly, this overreach by county representatives simultaneously serves unstated political and partisan agendas to override the CSAB and State Board of Education decisions. by obstructing the timely opening of Dogwood Classical Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go back to the live. I see Tony. You wish to address council? Name and address, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. It's Tony Wheeler Jensen, sixty-two thirty Roseway Court in the Rocky River Crossing subdivision. I'm just, today I just wanted to make you aware of, in twenty nineteen, the town finished what they had started about repaving Rocky River Crossing Road. Once it was repaved, it, nobody ever came back to line up the road or to put the stop lines in, the crosswalk lines in, any of the lines that we had at it while it was being repaved. So we let it, it kind of slid around a little bit, and then I got in touch with the town. And then in twenty twenty, that's when, you know, the whole COVID thing started, so it kind of set. I had talked to people about it, and then it had kind of set quiet because of COVID. Once I brought it up again, oh, I'm on the HOA board, I'm the vice president. I brought it up again to the town and was wondering, you know, when we can get our lines put in. And I was kind of brushed off a little bit, and then it said that the camp, that the the board was trying to figure out what to do, that they were thinking of taking out our stop signs on Rocky River Crossing Road. And I was like, that's not going to go because the community in itself had fought for them quite a while ago. I've been there eighteen years. After that, one of our residents, after not hearing back, one of our residents, Jeff Phillips, got in touch with the board or got in touch with the town and had said, you know, we need our lines. I mean, the same thing I pretty much did, but didn't get any response. And pretty much the next day, somebody came out and they lined up the side streets on the, on, off of Rocky River Crossing for the stop sign lines. However, no, no stop sign line on Rocky River Crossing was put back. None of the crosswalks were put back. We have one that crosses to the playground closer on the end of Moorhead side. None of the crosswalks across the regular side streets were put back either. And I had, I then contacted the town again and was like, we just really need this done. I was told a lot of different things. The last thing was that they shouldn't be there because it's not a three-way stop or it's a three-way stop, and it doesn't meet the DOT. And I'm like, well, y'all put them in and we, you know, we just want, I don't want anything different. Our residents don't want anything different than what was there. We want the stop line, stop lines to be put at the stop signs because, believe it or not, on Rocky River Crossing Road, the traffic is is getting to be extensive. There are two humps going from Moorhead to the beginning of our development because we don't own that property at all. Once our development of Rocky River Crossing starts, there, we have stop signs. And people will run those with, and I know the lines shouldn't make a difference, but they really do. It does remind people to stop, which is great. We have no way of residents on one side of Rocky River Crossing Development to cross over to the other side, which the other side is where the pool is, where the clubhouse is, where our playground is. So we're lacking all that kind of thing. And with the, with the, the traffic that now is going from Moorhead to Roberta through our, through Rocky River Crossing Road. So we're not asking for anything. We're just wanting what was there to be put back the way it should be. Any questions?
I think we'll have some, we have a staff member that can probably speak to some of what you said and also probably work with Jeff Phillips as he approached council.
Right. I just give a little bit of background. I appreciate Ms. Jensen calling in. I know she's worked with Mallory on this several times, and most accounts is pretty familiar with this. And I have somewhat of a green share on this because we've talked about this in the past. And I think the last time we went out, Councilman Russo, myself, Councilman Bellinger, former Councilman Phillips walked the, the site, and we left it. Basically, we need some further direction from council, and council is aware of that. We've sent some, some emails out, but I think they're the transition managers. It's just something that's been put on hold. Neighborhood and. This is the area where we're talking about Rocky River Crossing. And what I'm getting, you've got some pictures here so we could kind of go through this with you real quick, if you don't mind. The intersections we're talking about in question are three-way intersections that have a stop on three, all three locations. From a warrant standpoint, just from a simple engineering warrant standpoint, Ms. Jensen's right, we've, we've communicated to her that those do not meet any type of engineering requirement. Put in over the years by resident request, by non-licensed designers, we just put them up. And that happens, and that's typical in communities all over North Carolina. However, when you do upgrade them, like we did with paving, then you need to do an analysis and say, okay, what belongs here and what doesn't, based on what's in our warrants. So what we have out there right now are several intersections that do meet warrants, which are the four-way, but several that don't. Those, those three-way intersections, and for, for good reason, don't meet a stop warrant. Stop signs are not permitted to be used at speed devices because they give a false sense of security for the pedestrians crossing the road. And they've been shown through many studies to actually increase ads, both pedestrian vehicle and vehicle on vehicle. So we're, we're kind of in limbo out there right now, as you can see on, on these. Our staff cannot add things back that aren't warranted, but we've also not taken anything away that wasn't a part of the actual paving. So the signs are there. The stop bars have not been put back, and we don't tend to put them back in the current form. And the reason we aren't is because we need to make a decision. Is this road, is Rocky River Crossing a through road? Is this a corridor that we're going to use east-west? Because we only have three corridors east-west for the town. One is forty-nine, which is at capacity. The other is Stallings Road, which is at capacity, and this is the third. Or is this a neighborhood road? And if it's a neighborhood road, then we certainly can stop these intersections and use safety as a warrant. But a single stop bar isn't going, it's not going to do the trick. What we need to do with these intersections, if we're actually going to stop them, is put stop heads on both sides, put stop signs on both sides, put stop word on the pavement, put reflectors in the road. We really need to draw attention to these intersections so that people know to stop, because right now, nobody stops. Signs are there. We put stop bars back, people still won't stop. They rolling stop at best. So really, what we need to staff is just a direction from council of, you know, are we going to abandon an east-west corridor and make it a neighborhood road? In which case, we'll, we can, we can narrow these roads, we can put all kinds of markings. Just kind of remain a through route, in which case the stop sign should be removed. There will be no need for the stop bar. But right now, it, it's this, it's this hybrid that doesn't work. So, you know, I know that question's been out before council. I know it's not a, not the pressing one with some of the other major things that council's been dealing with. But certainly, I know the neighbor here doesn't like the current condition. But even, again, putting those stop bars back is, is not a solution long-term for the issue out there.
May I interject?
Absolutely.
Okay, as, as a resident and been here for a very long time in our, in our community, and I know speaking, I can speak for the majority of our community. We are, this road is a community road. This road was not meant and not made to be a cut-through or throwaway, a connecting bit. If, if actually, in the last, like, what was it, seventeen years, or actually it was less than that, it wasn't even a through at all. I mean, when I moved in, it wasn't through at all. We were, this road was our community road to get us into our community. And, and we were supposed to actually go all the way across. Rocky River Crossing was supposed to go all the way to the, the other side, and then it went private and somebody else bought it. But to be, have a conversation in a, in a way that's saying, oh, is this a, is this going to be considered a connection? Or is this a neighborhood road? This is our neighborhood road, and it was our neighborhood road first and foremost when this development was built. It wasn't built as a connector. It's just become something that it should not be. And, and just speaking from people at, from our meetings, we don't want it to be, it's not supposed to be a connector. We have over five hundred and twenty-five homes here, and we were the largest in Harrisburg Town. Our people need to be safe, and we do not need this to be a connecting road.
Yeah, I mean, from a staff standpoint, we can, we can certainly appreciate that. I do think there's multiple ways to, to treat the road. The only thing I'm speaking to when I say, you know, a connector road versus a neighborhood road are the design parameters, and that's it. So the, the, the design parameters of the road are for, are for a through road. You wouldn't have to make any design changes to maintain it as a through road. And it was stubbed to go from one thoroughfare road to another thoroughfare road. It's never cul-de-sac. It was never changed. Stop signs in question were added after the original, so I can learn part of the original design. So when I say, you know, neighborhood road versus thoroughfare, it's simply, how was it designed? Not, not anything more or less than that.
Right. But I mean, I was under the assumption when we, I mean, this road was a neighborhood road at one point. And, I mean, we're just asking for stop lines, you can put the bars, you can put big old stop words. I don't care how you put it to make people stop. That's what we need to do. And if you consider it a connecting, then what would be the other ways of stopping people? Because that's over a mile through, through. And, and as it is now, they're going fifty, fifty miles an hour at least through there. So it's like, this is our resident. This is where we live, and we need it to be able to stop. We need these people to stop. So I would ask the, the count, the council then to vote that this is a residential road. This is our residential road, that you put the stop sign, you put the stop light, you put anything you have to do to make it such. That's all we ask.
A way to look at the original design, because you say it's originally designed that way. But I bet you if you pulled our originals on, it was not designed to be a thorough, thorough through. So, so you can see that, you can show that to us, that it was officially. Can you have the staff come back with some recommendations based on what you've heard here today and see what, and then council can make some decisions? That way we can at least know.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, please? I remember walking that road with Rob and Councilman Russo, and people didn't stop. And I certainly know that, that, that is their community, and I recognize that. And we, we are at a concern here because we're getting ready to vote on a Highway forty-nine beautification plan. We voted on a CT plan recently. And last month, if you'll remember, I said that document did not take into consideration where the traffic's going to go once it leaves Highway forty-nine if we remove the turns. Now, I'm not, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Parallel Drive, which one of our commit, our town council members lives, lives on, that's going to be a road that takes that traffic one day. Moore's Drive is going to be the traffic. School Circle is going to be the traffic. So, and I remember Rob, as we, when we walked this, you made the comment to me, council needs to make a decision what they want this road to be. Now, Cecile, I know in our UDO and first, future documents, one of the comments was, we want to be sure roads are no longer straight when they're in neighborhoods to diminish people flying through there, that it would slow them down. So, Ms. Jensen, I understand, but I do, council, I bring up to this to say, we need to look at that document that we're going to vote and, and decide how we're going to handle these roads. And this is the time to maybe make that decision. Just a moment. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll come back next month and, and, you know, discuss this. My move forward, there, there is no staff standpoint, we're, we're, we can make recommendations, but it depends on what the end goal is. So if the end goal is what's the safest, slowest road, we're going to make a recommendation that we stop these, highlight them and narrow them. If it's to promote traffic so we can get it around town, then we're going to recommend to open it up and promote that. So that's the only guidance we would need. And really, that's, that's a policy decision that, that both decisions negatively affect somebody. So we defer those to, to you guys, lucky, lucky guys on the dais and girls on the dais to, to make this.
When you say that, you know, the first thing that comes to mind recently was the Stallings. There is a road that's going to connect from Raging Ridge to Farm Mills. Would that be the same type of connect that you're talking about this is supposed to be? And is that on that bigger map? I know the Raging Ridge, the Farm Mills on that larger map that's been there forever, but is this one there as well?
It, it would, it would be a similar, it wouldn't have a similar cross-section, but it, it would have a similar effect. Thoroughfares or connector streets are, are streets that you expect people to not stop in, to just travel past the houses. And this is effective use as that, but that might not be the, the use that, you know, the town wants for this area. So, you know, that's, that's one of those hard decisions of, is it, is it a thoroughfare, an east-west connector? Or are we going to slow people down? Push them more to forty-nine, push them more to parallel and, and the new grid streets there.
All right, going back to the remaining, we wish to address council, approach Tony, and we'll go find the fun. Anyway, you wish to address council, the fundraiser hand, anybody who's ready, last call. Here it is. We will continue to move forward. Have a question to approve the consent agenda?
So, see?
I'll say it.
Proudly say it. I'll favor say aye. Opposed, aye. No question, carry.
Your council. What I'd mention was about July four celebration. As we discussed, it was a resounding success. And thank you, Parks and Rec, as well as all the other departments that had a hand in that event. It was the first event that we had of that size in the new park. So it was a big learning experience for us, but we were able to comfortably fit eighty-five hundred people the first night and over fifteen thousand the second night. So we definitely saw the benefit of having a larger park with the multiple fields where we're able to spread out the amusements and all the entertainment as well as the food. So we'll continue to look at that. We are going to be meeting as a group of all the people that had involvement in it in the next couple of weeks so we can evaluate what worked, what didn't work, what could be better, what kind of vision we may have to bring forward to y'all with the next budget cycle. So be on the lookout for that. I want to update on a couple of action items from last month. So the HOA amenity centers relating to the trash service. We are still working with Waste Pro to get that information to try to figure out if we can negotiate a price either for these HOA amenity centers or to bring it in-house. We hope to have that information for council next month. In the meantime, we have communicated with Waste Pro to make sure they continue to provide service to those amenity centers until council makes a decision on that. And we've also sent communication out to all the amen, or all the HOAs advising them of that. So they're aware of it, and hopefully we shouldn't have any issues. And we'll have that information back before you next month. Also, council had asked for us to look about new ways to communicate with residents. We've come together and began talking about ways that we can accomplish that. One of the first things that we want to do is figure out how people are currently getting their communication from the town and then find out what ways do they want to get communicated from the town. And then we can bridge that gap and see if we can fill that in. And then we can bridge that gap and see if we can fill that in. So will we bring in more information back to you as we move forward with that? The water and sewer rate increases that were part of the budget this year. We, those do go into effect as far as the water and sewer rates as of next month with the August bill. So we are going to be getting communication out to the public advising them of that. So they'll be aware and it won't be a surprise when they get their bills next month. The water quality update relating to the TPHM levels. As I've mentioned to council in the last few management reports, the rates have stayed below 0.065 and hopefully we'll be able to continue to keep that below. We're continuing to flush on a regular basis and that's one of the main ways we're able to keep those numbers down. And our next formal compliance test is on August the 6th. So because it's a four quarter rolling average over a year, it will require that rate to be pretty low for this August date in order to come out of the notice. So we're not, we're again, attempting to flush as much as we can to get that number down. And it has stayed significantly down from where we were before, but just to be aware that if we can't get it to that rolling four quarter average below 0.08, we'll have to notify residents again of that. We'll keep you posted as that comes up. Just another mention on the disc golf. As far as what council discussed today, just wanted to reiterate that we will take all that into consideration as we move forward with designing that. And make sure that we have all the parties involved to get as good a design as we can to minimize impacts. And we'll also make sure that we are working with the advisory boards as best as we can to run this kind of information through to them to utilize their talents and get some direction with that. So. And lastly, I wanted to mention some important dates we have coming up. So on July 15th, we have a neighborhood developer meeting. And this is for a new residential development off Roxton Church Road and Mallory Lane, which is just north of Claire Haven. Then we have the P and Z board on July 20th. We have a lot on that agenda. Black Welder property will be on there. The McKinley subdivision, that's a lower Rocky River Road. And then the shops at Hickory Ridge, which is the Bloom corner. All three of those will be on that P and Z board. So that'll be a big one. And then also our committee chat is going to be July 29th. It's going to be here at council chambers as well as being broadcast on Zoom. We'll be discussing Formington UDO updates and general discussions on development. And we have Logan that is working on pushing information out as many places as we can. I believe we've gotten it to HBA. We also have some banners put together so we can put those up in town and really try to continue to push that out. So we can try to drive some of that. And that's all that I have. Any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Anyway, I mean, on the water issue. Can't find the source. Can't just tell them.
Yeah, well, Rob, you want to talk to that specifically since your department's running that?
I mean, I know we just turned over the water tower too. Does that cleaning have any effect on that or is this Albemarle water?
Yeah, it, it doesn't really. We, we have several testing points throughout town. And the, the high test was only going to me. So it's, it's one right by the office actually. If we test right in the corner of Coldwell and Harrisburg investor park. All the others have been consistently fine for that rolling average. So the water that, that feeds that location doesn't come from water towers. It comes from the Moorhead road feed coming on forward. So it, it's really isolated to that area. And a, a, as Lee said, it's better now, but because it's a one year look back, that number raises our average for the next three quarters. So our next recorder would need to be really low to offset that one high that we had. So it was a temporary condition. We have to kind of pay the, the price for being a temporary condition for the next three quarters and, and make sure our numbers are really low in order to get out of that end of the fee. But from a, from a water quality standpoint currently, it being at 0.06 as well as regulation that we have to be at, but you know, Concord's doing what, what they had to do to flush their system. But PTHMs just by their nature are a byproduct of chlorine killing organics. So when you have lake turnover and you have to basically kill the algae in the lake water, that water that's treated has those DTHMs, which are methane gases in the water as a byproduct. And when they're exposed to air, they, they do dissipate. So flushing and getting the high concentration valve pretty much take care of it. So we're, we're comfortable with where we're at now, but it's just tough because we, we had that one really high number for that one quarter and we have to keep everything very low just to get out of that end of the fee. But DEQ is very comfortable with our action plan. And you know, our terms, that's still a good job. Make sure we get that one testing location downed in so that we can get it as quickly as possible.
Rob, is this another issue that directly reflects the lack of circulation in the tower at the Speedway and the lack of use of water there?
It, it could be. We, we, we haven't narrowed, we did narrow, this happened once before in 2018. Last time we had the, the earthly taste in the water, you know, exact scenario. Situation. And at that point, that tower, they did, you know, overfill it and flush it and be able to get rid of it. In this case, the, the numbers one is high there. So I think this is more kind of like a a pulse situation because we caught it a lot sooner than we did in 2018. So they were able to shut down Albemarle in 2018 or in this case, they were able to shut down Albemarle right away. And then just basically flush Concord system, flush our system. And then now the numbers are right where they need to be. And so it's not really, it's not really a Concord system problem as much as an original treatment problem, which, which really starts normal.
And now turn it over to Brian for his finance report.
Evening, Mayor and Council. All right. So here's our, actually before I get started with my presentation. It's just a little behind. I just wanted to clarify on the youth council commitment that you made earlier. Any sort of grant funds flowing into the town and us having to spend any of that money on anything. And there is no contractual relationship with her organization. She was just looking for a commitment to support and be a part of. So there's no financial impact to the town at all. And we just clarified that after she spoke. So just to put your mind at ease on that, that there is no sort of concern there with that. For the revenue expense dashboard for fiscal year 21, the last one is of June 30th. You see that all the revenues are in green except for water and sewer. Tax collections did round out at 106% for the year due to our pullback on expected revenues from COVID. That pulled the general fund up to 103%. So we're very pleased with that. And stormwater came in right at 100%. Water and sewer, we know that about two to 3% is the fees and penalties that we stopped assessing for the majority of the year. And once we make some of our accruals to bring the June 10th through June 30th balance that is billed in July back into fiscal year 21, will probably be in the 97, 98% mark for the year. So really good revenue across all of our funds this year. Our departmental expenditures in the general government are all in the green here. See administration did come up really close and 100%. Couple of dollars short of the budget. So it's out there budgeting late. And then all of our other departments, no concerns. They are the highest in the 90% range. For the rest of our departments in the general fund and onto water, sewer and stormwater, the same sort of results somewhere between the 60s and 90s for budget utilization. And see the salaries townwide ended at 89% for the year. Now we'll go into our project dashboard. So these are our single year projects. I want, I was, I want to point out that Holcomb Wood soccer fields are at 90%. That is the field construction and the power has been delivered to the site by Duke. As of June 30th, we were only waiting on a county inspection. And then the other things that need to happen out there are dependent on naming of the facility, which we will do next month. And some of the fiscal year 22 project items that still need to be done, like netting and site furnishings. Jim covered the deconstruction really well, so I won't go into that again. I do want to draw your attention to the town center trash compactor. It's at zero and says expire. That agreement did expire on June 30th due to inaction by the HOA that is fulfilling the requirements of that prior agreement. And so they have requested that staff put together another agreement and bring it back to council for consideration. So I know the engineering and Rich are working on putting together another agreement that is worded a little differently. And that should be brought back to you next month for consideration. For our multi-year projects in design, the water lines are ticking along another 3% this month. The Harrisburg train station shows us 41%. That design is not going to be completed by July 31st. That's mostly due to the number of agencies that are involved in this project. But we, we do have the overall conceptual design at 95%. And so you should be seeing some elevations with some color on them as well to see what that site's going to look like. But the overall design process is somewhere around the midpoint range right now.
Counsel, I'd just like to mention that I hope to have within the next month, a full update of where we are on the train station. We've had some discussions. I've been in continuous discussions with NCRR as well as design team on that. So I'm just waiting for some updated calendar information as far as what the timeline is looking like, as well as getting those elevations for council to look at. And once we have all that, we'll.
Here's a look at our projects that are under construction. So the fire station, storage and training facility is just waiting on the elevated water tank to finish up and get off the site so that we don't have multiple crews on the site. But that contract's been awarded and they are ready to go once the site is ready for them. The I think we've covered the rest there. And as you know, we've put Moorhead West on hold pending better, better pricing there. Our equipment projects are all complete for the year. The last one was a camstraw collector set collecting data and in service right now. These are our vehicle projects. So the first one, the engineering vehicle. One, the logistics truck and then both water sewer trucks are waiting on manufacturer to deliver that to the dealer. But we do have all the accessories purchased and ready to install. Those are just going to depend on the manufacturer to get those delivered to us. The deputy chief suburban has been received and is getting outfitted right now with lights and graphics on the side. So that one will be placed in service soon. Professional services projects, Highway 49 corridor plan, we saw that in June. And there will be final action taken on that next month. And the UDO, we will probably give plenty about tonight. So I won't go into any details there. Other updates from the finance department, fiscal year 2021 was closed successfully and rolled over to fiscal year 2022. We had about 730,000 encumbrances, which are contracts that we have awarded, but have not paid out yet. I think a couple hundred thousand of that is going to come back into 21 as a result of accounts payable. Once we get all the invoices in for things that were actually performed or actually received prior to June 30th. So carrying over about 400, 450,000 in contracts is really good. That's the lowest we've had in a number of years. So I'm real happy about that. As soon as we roll over to a new fiscal year, the finance department has a lot of looking back. So we'll have our annual workers compensation audit for fiscal year 21. That is scheduled for July 26th. And then our 2021 audit and financial statement prep is underway right now already. Our audit is September 7th through 10th and the financial statement are due to the state October 31st. We submit around the 15th. I just wanted to remind everyone that utility billing, both our monthly schedule, the way we assess fees. Our entire setup for utility billing has been restored to pre- pandemic setup. The only exception is credit card convenience fees have decreased from 250 down to $2. But everything is back to normal with the way that we disconnect and assess fees. We also have signed agreements to purchase the land that will be used to construct the fire station one admin building and a potential public safety complex. And those are expected to close on or before September 30th. Another thing that the department's been working on a lot is the ARPA money that has been granted. And that is an item in new business. So I'll cover that at that point. Glad to answer any questions.
Question for you, and it's probably more directed at Jim than it is you, but when we talk about Holcomb Fields, are they able to be used today or is there going to be like a ribbon cutting dedication or what happens?
Have to look at Jim on that. Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're, they can be used now, but we've kind of closed it because we want to finish. The, the guys are actually started this week. Started in the process of the perimeter plantings and, and control of the vegetation there. And the plan is to, we ordered portable toilets today to put up. The plan is we shoot for around August 1st to, to kind of be ready to go. There will be, the plan is some kind of a ribbon cutting or some kind of a ceremony. To what level? We don't know. You haven't really even gotten that far yet.
And it was during the time it was being constructed or just before. There was discussion about it being not a full size cricket field. It's a reduced size. Yes, female size or something of that nature. I don't know the terminology, but is that, are they able to begin to start? Will they be able in August to start using that space?
Yeah, so about a month or so ago, met with Sashil and Jeep over there to look at it, measure it. And the conversation was that it would handle the recreational style cricket without much trouble. I mean, although we, we set up where we want to put the field, the ideal to, idea would be to put in a a clay, what do you call it?
Pitch.
Pitch in the middle. And to get that set up, we looked at the best way to set it up. And then once we get that ready to go, we'll keep it lined for them and they'll book it and all that kind of stuff. It's not big enough for like a professional, you know, the higher level cricket because it would just, the ball would, would not stay in the field.
So today they're meeting and playing at Stalings on Sunday morning. It's very early. Size wise, getting more space over there, would they?
I, I think it's a little bit more space is what Jeep was telling me, a little more space than it's stolen. So yeah. It should, it should be a good setup for, we think. We, we, we plan it like I said, we, we told them we will keep it lined and ready to go and they'll fill out some paperwork just like everybody else. We'll get it all, you know, lined up so that they know when they have it along and they don't have any problems with, you know, double bookings, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, we, we talked about a preferred vendor list and sharing that with council and we'd like to know how many of those vendors are local here to Harrisburg and what percentage of that is, come back to council with that.
I can do that.
Great to appreciate.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Let's hold up on the compactor. Didn't we agree to put the bill for this thing? You would think they would jump on it. I mean, what are they waiting on?
That was my conversation.
Location.
Location.
We're paying for it.
Nobody wants to remember that, Tony.
Yeah.
And they hit your waste.
They'd rather look at the big trash pile?
And it's not on their property. That's the problem.
They say that's Australia feet, but you know, hands have mentioned previously that we're waiting to let them get back to us. She's been a lot of back.
I had to get some, you know, a real good push to show some sort of progress towards the achievable's in the contract for us to have some sort of justification to carry it over year in. And that just didn't happen in the last month. I never heard anything back after our first conversation. So.
No, they're fighting over looks. I mean, put a screen wall up.
But I thought that question was asked in one of the, one of our meetings and they said, we don't care. We know that's where it's going to be and it's okay. But now it's.
But they just let it expire so they can. Say now we want to talk.
Council had actually approved that agreement last year and the agreement put in specific benchmark dates that they had to meet. One of the first things was the 30 days of the approval of that, they were supposed to come back to us with the location. That took a lot longer than 30 days. And when we finally got got a meeting. And when we finally got, got a meeting with them and Sushil and Rob and engineering were there, the location that they wanted was not going to work the way they wanted it to work. And it was not the two other alternative locations that we had proposed to them early on, as was mentioned when Haynes was here. So their big thing that they were saying was that it was taking them a long time with COVID to find somebody that would do the work and design it and everything. And then it got to the point where we were well past all the benchmarks in the contract, where we were pushing them, as Brian said, that we needed to get this done before the end of the fiscal year or it was going to have to come back to council again for the third time. And they just never did really communicate very well with us until the very end. And then they were asking for us to come back to council with another agreement. So we're kind of in that situation where, as you mentioned, we're handing out money, but they just, for whatever reason, aren't wanting to move. And what we've also told them is that once that area starts developing, that compactor has to go. So they're going to be in a situation where they have nowhere to put their trash. So they really need to get moving on it soon. And turn it over to the deputies for law enforcement update.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share this information. Briefly, if I may, I'd like to introduce myself as one of the new sergeants here in Harrisburg. I am newly in this position as a sergeant on night shift, but I am not new to Harrisburg. I've been in Harrisburg for the last several years as the town investigator. I've just been promoted to sergeant now. With that said, I'd like to give you the numbers for this past month. The total number of calls for service for the last month were 1,691. Security checks were 1,415. Traffic stops for last month were 162. And our non-emergency response time was eight minutes and 18 seconds. We have no trending crime as of last month. We just have the same crime that seems to be at the same number between five and seven incidents regarding loss of shoplifting. We think that is due simply because we are in proximity, close to a large county, that being Mecklenburg County. We are happy to say that of those numbers, we have arrested about a third of the individuals responsible for those crimes. Unfortunately, we don't expect to see any decline due to the proximity of Mecklenburg County. What we hope to do is just continue to, to keep the numbers where they are and to make arrests with those crimes. Any questions?
I do have a question. Speaking with one of my neighbors last night, and this is on the border of Harrisburg and Concord. They were hit, I guess, with a frozen water bottle of some sort in, on their car and their windshield shattered. And apparently this has been going on in this particular area on Roberta Road for the past month or so. Is there any way for us to do any type of a different alert to let people know that this is occurring? Or what we can do differently? And of course, to provide you guys with feedback, especially if there's something on somebody's ring or whatever that we can provide to you for investigators?
Exactly. That's exactly what I would, would suggest is that being as a town investigator, I have a little more leeway as far as the tools that I have to investigate the crimes that a lot of the officers have. I have what is called the Ring Neighborhood, which I am associated with, where I get all of the Ring video for the whole county. So I would say any neighbor or neighborhoods that are experiencing that type of damage, property damage, check your neighbor's video, check your video if you have access to the Ring camera system and report it. And we'll see what we can do as far as, okay, who might be responsible for it.
When did that actually occur? Because we've read all, we usually read most of the reports and haven't seen any of those.
This was two weekends ago, she told me.
In Harrisburg, in the county or in the city?
It was border. She was turning from Roberta onto Blackwelder, coming from out of town at three o'clock in the morning. And apparently a truck passed her and threw something out of the car and they didn't know what it was. And just the windshield splattered.
And I've heard from Pitt School to Blackwelder in that space as well, that there's a group of kids or something hitting cars, either with eggs or other objects.
That's right. That's the line for us, but that's going to be the city of Concord. I'll see if we can get ahold of them and find out what they know about it. Don't think we've actually had any inside of Harrisburg town limits, but that's still close enough for us to get involved.
Yeah, she said that a sheriff came out to do, to do the report, I guess because of where it was. It wasn't Concord Police that did it.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Anybody, his name is Gerald Williams. I think he left.
I'm sorry.
Just in case somebody wants to call him.
We still have your numbers. I just have a couple of things. Met with the president of HPA, actually the new president of HPA. I think we're going to see some more requests coming from them for supporting what they're trying to do is actually build up their membership base and try to really hit all the businesses in the community. Possible online directory tied to the town of Harrisburg, sign up for HPA, get your name in our directory kind of thing. It's kind of trying to promote what they're doing, what they're trying to do. And I think they're also, and I know Troy Hardick speaks, will develop a buy local program for businesses, the residents. But from a Harrisburg perspective, they'd really like to see us come up with some percentage of what we kind of would be the services from the county of Harrisburg to buy local and then make us a few dollars more. But we're obviously, obviously want to preserve growth and retention of our local businesses, so that's important. The red, so somebody may or may not know, a couple of months ago, we started a committee to actually rubberize the track and put asphalt turf on the football field at Hickory Ridge. That's going pretty well. We're going to start working on a proposal, which was required by meeting with the finance director. Comeris E D has, and trying to go up with that, what we're going to do from a finance perspective. So I know we've actually submitted some proposals for county matching grants in the past. If somebody could dig those up and actually get them to be, we're just looking for some templates that we could leverage and something that makes sense and something we can steal, maybe we'll see what we can push out. Got some good news from the county. Turfing the ridge is actually on their plan, but it could be somewhere between zero and 10 years away. Oh, thus participating, they would actually move it up significantly on the timeline. And hopefully I want to see them pay for at least half of what $1.30 that it would cost in order to get that done a little bit quicker. So good, good stuff there. I'm going back to with Lisa about the fourth. I had so many people say, what an amazing venue that we had. It was just an awesome time. Staff did an incredible job this year in the kind of the shorter period of time, basically. We didn't know we were going to do it. So kudos to the entire staff that was involved. And you're speaking of air quality, I was standing in the booth over there where the sustainability board was. They had a reading prior to the fireworks, reading prior to fireworks, like 20. And while the fireworks were going on, it jumped all the way to 630. Say that was about 30 minutes, so don't breathe, darn fireworks. But it's interesting that we're actually able to try that and it dissipated rather quickly. Also, a congratulations to a council member, Troy Selber. He was nominated for 2021 Greater Cabarrus County Person of the Year for the Public Office category. And counsel, how for your comments?
Mayor, I'll pick up on the Harrisburg business slides. We're real happy to announce that we are now going to start our buy local campaign. Right after coming out of COVID, these business owners need this desperately. We hired a, and I shouldn't say hired. We have a member of our community that is a professional videographer and has put together some fantastic videos. We have four of them in the can, I would say. So we have four of them ready to start to roll out. What I would ask of council and residents, if you could share those videos as you see them, share them with the community and let the community know that we do have some wonderful businesses here in Harrisburg and would like us to support them. On top of that, as revenue that, that we get from those businesses in the sales and use tax, it exceeds $1.7 million that we receive in funding from the county for our sales and use tax for these businesses. So as people migrate through our community and as our residents use businesses here in Harrisburg, our residents do benefit from that and a tax deference to their property tax. So if you can push those videos out, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to say, Jim, if you'll just tell all the people that worked the, the Fourth of July, that's great. You know, ended up seeing one of the guys that picks up the limbs, that drives the truck to pick up a limb. So he was working that day, so useful staff. And we certainly do appreciate them doing that if you will, you know, pass that word along to them. And we talked about speed bumps tonight. I want to get a clarification, Rob, that Regent Ridge has been turned over to the city now?
Not completely. It's in the process. It's, it's a multiple paperwork process. I don't think we've done all, we, we pre-accepted Regent Ridge way before I was here and most people. And then, so DOT has now done their paperwork to release it to us, but they haven't sent us that. I believe we still have one more acceptance process to do, to make it officially on our system. It may have been done in the last week or so.
When that happens, we're getting rid of the speed bumps or we're going to leave.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that nothing had changed, that those were going to go away. Tonight, Ms. Hodges spoke about the Dogwood Academy, and I recently learned about the Dogwood Academy. And I think even Councilman Selberg did. This is a school that she even said that talked about its free tuition. It knows no boundary of social economics, no race, no ethnicity. It's been cited for Harrisburg, not Harrisburg, I'm sorry, Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County. And anybody that lives in Mecklenburg, Union County, Aridale County can come to the school. You do not have to be a resident of Cabarrus County. It's a, it's built off of Hillsdale. And Hillsdale is a very well-known college that promotes exceptional learning. And I've learned recently that they use phonetics, or if you're not, I'm not saying that right, and how they teach their students to read. Whereas I was taught to read, see Tom run, see Jane throw the ball, et cetera. They use the entire phonetics. And the students that come out of these programs excel very well and go on and are able to do lawyers. And here again, it is bound by no ethnicity, no race, no socioeconomic. What has occurred is that the Hillsdale and the Dogwood Academy have placed an offer on a building that used to be owned, and that's why I was interested, that used to be owned by Cardinal and, escapes me right now. Bima, thank you. All right. The, the Cabarrus County has decided to condemn that building now and not allow the school to purchase the property. I would just like here again that maybe our, our board would talk to commissioners and maybe see why and say, this is an opportunity to allow free education to all, allow people to come to Harrisburg or Cabarrus County and visit Cabarrus County and see what we're about. But if this school is not there, this is, this is about an opportunity that's once in a lifetime. 25 are in this, in the United States, three are currently underway. One of them of those three are in Cabarrus County, and this could very well be a missed opportunity. So hopefully, as you get to speak to the county commissioners, town council, I'll hope you ask them to reconsider that they do not condemn this property. And it's already been brought before them that they said they had no plans, but all of a sudden, after they've got an offer on the property, they now decided to condemn. So I, I don't want to get political, but I think this is a great opportunity for Cabarrus County, for Harrisburg, for Concord, for Mount Pleasant, for Midland and Kannapolis. So I just wanted to bring that up and make you aware of that this evening.
What are the council comments? Just want to, again, reiterate, thank staff, all of staff, especially Parks and Rec for a great Fourth of July program. I, I just keep hearing it still, how awesome it is. But also thank Lieutenant Miesmer and the new sergeant, Sergeant, correct? Yes, correct. And all the deputies that were out there. You guys did a great job as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so Mayor, the multicultural festival, the heart, the Harrisburg Arts and Heritage Council are putting on the multicultural festival on September 18th. So it's going to be something big for us to really pay attention to and have the community come out for us. I'm excited about it.
And the new event?
And, yes, 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 yes.
Anything else? So we have a Cabarrus summit next week. It's going to be a perfect time for doing exactly what you said, council members, for us to have a conversation, find out what's going on. So you guys are elbowing in the pre-game warm-up. That's perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say real quick, thank you to our Cabarrus County officers. First time we've seen them all back here in the wall and glad to see you back in the nights. Thank you, guys.
All right, let's go to our first public hearing. Public hearing today for the, do you have? This is only going to take a few minutes because it's almost nine.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council. So it's been exciting 16 months when we first started conversation about updating our unified development ordinance for the towns. So the town council approved contract in March of 2020 for, and directive staff to look at our current UDO and go through the update process, including the stakeholders and our residents living in this community. So one of, one of the recommendations, if you recall, from the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan, which we often refer as HELP, was to look at our UDO and make changes to align with the recommendations that came out in the HELP. So that's exactly what we did throughout this process is to look at some of the recommendations from a land use, from the density perspective, and try to make our ordinance, which is a legal document. HELP is a policy guidance that the town adopts, does not have as much teeth as the UDO. So UDO is your legal instrument to, to implement what the HELP guides that happens in the community. It was also timely for us that the state changed land use legislation through Chapter 160D adoption, which required every community in, in North Carolina to make changes to their UDO and update the UDO. So we were able to do both of those at the same time. One of the exciting thing about this UDO is we're changing the format so it becomes more user-friendly. It's going to be a native internet format where it will allow folks to search and look at different information, navigate to the mapping component of it and go back and forth. It also will allow you to print the document if somebody chooses to do so. And there are a lot of features built into the website that will allow folks to search a parcel and that will generate a list of regulations that apply to that parcel. So there are tools built into that. We are holding today, tonight is a public hearing, so you're not making a decision on the adoption tonight. It's a public hearing. We'll bring you back to you for adoption next month. So planning and zoning boards. So planning and zoning boards, so we presented this to the planning and zoning board last month. They had a few suggestions to the public draft, and we've made those changes. Brian Mayberry will be presenting on behalf of Candy Keys. He'll go through some of those changes we made based on the planning board recommendation, and then we'll bring it back to the council in August for final adoption. So before I hand it over to Brian, a couple of things I wanted to highlight, I know at the last meeting and some of you attended the planning board, there was comments made about some of the concerns about the commercial design guidelines, where we have added some design elements to enhance the buildings elevation in Harrisburg. We were able to work with those concerns and have modified the language to find that comment. So that's a positive thing we were able to achieve. There were a couple of things about the Energy Star ratings criteria that planning board brought up, and we were able to go back and look at that and revisit it. And I think it's in a better place now than it was during our presentation. So again, Brian will go through that, and he'll be happy to answer any questions from his perspective, and I will be addressing any questions you may have from you and the residents during the public hearing. With that, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'll go ahead and screen share, and you'll be able to share it.
Yep. And... Okay, you should be able to see my screen now. Brian Mayberry with Candy Keys Collaborative. Thank you, Sushil, for introducing me and this project. I won't have to cover too much on the front end here because you covered a lot of things that are already shown in the PowerPoint. But basically, five of the goals of this project is to, of course, implement the HELAP, to make the administration of the current, of the UDO easier, to make it in an internet-friendly format, as mentioned, to update it based on input we heard from town staff and from members of the community. We had both an advisory committee made up of citizens and a staff committee who were looking at the drafts of this document as we went through it. And so the, what I'm giving you tonight is a very high overview, be very difficult to cover everything in an amount of time that wouldn't put everyone to sleep. So just giving you a very high overview of the contents of this document. And then the fifth part of this project, again, is to implement and incorporate the changes to North Carolina general statutes that took place with Chapter 160D. Basically, just started again this project in April with a kickoff and have progressed through the process leading up to adoption next month on August 9th. Along the way, we had a lot of public engagement in spite of COVID, both, well, mostly online, I was going to say in person, but it hit just really when we were going to be getting into things. So to give you an idea of some of the public engagement activities we did, we interviewed 12 stakeholders who had different perspectives and roles in development process in the town. We presented a critique to several different groups of people, saying what we thought should change in the current UDO and what should stay the same. We did a survey online to help supplement some of the in-person activities we probably weren't able to do. Four hundred and eighteen respondents, which is amazing for a zoning topic. We held two virtual open house meetings for the kind of the first half of the document and then for the second half, and these were just presentations to whoever wanted to come virtually. And then we did some polling to those who attended and entertained any questions that those folks who attended might have had. We presented the draft to the Sustainability Advisory Board and got their input. We had commenting features open on the UDO's website so that people who were interested could review the draft and provide their comments, which Sushil and I received and responded to. And of those comments, there were about thirty sets of questions and comments that we received, and one set of questions or comments might have had, you know, ten, three, any range of numbers in there. So a lot of questions and comments were received as part of the review also from the public. I'm going to go through a few slides that show some key changes that have been incorporated into the document compared to your current document, getting rid of a lot of legalese that's in there and going for more understandable language while keeping the UDO legally defensible, updating, as has been mentioned, from a static PDF to an internet-native UDO that has clickable links and illustrations and definitions that when you hover over that word that's defined, the definition pops up in a bubble if you're using it online with, of course, the ability to print as well. We are working currently and will be providing a development guidebook that will show development review processes with flow charts, and will also provide application forms and also show the application fees. And this is sort of a companion piece to this UDO document. We, with the North Carolina general statutes, again, updating references to, or outdated references to especially Chapter 160A, to their appropriate references to 160D. Whenever there is a cross-reference in this document, again, if the user clicks on it, it takes that person in a new window tab to that document that's being referenced, whether it is the HELAP or whether it's 160D or whatever the case may be. As long as it's a digital document and it's being referenced, then you can look at exactly what document we're referring to in the code if you click on the link of that document. We reworked the sign standards to achieve compliance with the Supreme Court decision of Reed versus Gilbert that says that cities and towns can't regulate signs based on their purpose or their content. A very key set of changes relates to the zoning districts where Sushil and I have spent, especially recently, a lot of time rethinking and reworking on the zoning districts to make sure that they implement the land use categories that are in the HELAP and the densities that are in the HELAP so that the zoning districts truly implement the HELAP and what it recommends. We have development types, four different development types that are within each zoning district. Think of them as sort of sub-zoning districts that allow flexibility in providing housing types and open space and getting density bonuses. We also have protections built in for conventional developments, just, you know, your typical single-family detached developments. Whenever they are in place already and a new development comes in next to it that might be different, that might be a conservation or have smaller lots to it, then those developments in that new, or those lots in that new development on the perimeter have to match up with the lots in the existing conventional development, mashing them up in terms of lot area and in lot width and also in housing type so that they are compatible with each other and you don't have a drastic change along the backyard of single-family detached on one side and then suddenly, you know, townhouses or something on smaller lots on the other side. We updated the development standards, have a sustainability requirement and a bonus that I'll get into in a few slides later, having building and site design improvements, including enhanced facades on non-residential and mixed-use buildings, some provisions revised related to drive-throughs and outdoor dining, rear landscaping in the back that the staff had already sort of been requiring and requesting as development proposals came through, but this really puts it in black and white so that that's required on the backs of a budding lot. And then strengthening and modernizing the tree preservation standards. And many of these will have more, a little more detail a little later with stop slides specifically devoted to some of these bulleted topics. We revised the development review procedures by having a table in there that really summarizes everything you need to know about each of the development review applications, whether it's a variance, conditional rezoning, special use permit, any of those things. There's a table that summarizes all the steps that need to be taken and any kind of timeframes associated with that. We also comb through the definitions thoroughly to remove duplicates, revise and reword where needed, and consolidating potentially sort of repeating or definitions that needed consolidating. The districts in the land uses, as I said, were a key part of this effort. We established the different zoning districts, which relate to the future land use categories that are in the HELAP, again, providing developmental and dimensional standards, setbacks, building height, density, those kind of numbers that are tied to each of the districts, what land uses are allowed in what district, and then ways, guidance for interpreting the zoning map. So this is each of the new districts in the draft UDO are on the left, and then the former districts or what's in your current at-the-moment UDO are on the right. And as you can see, it's really, a lot of it is just relabeling and renaming districts to be a little more intuitive. There's consolidation. These will not really make an impact on your existing zoning map. There may be a few individual lots that are realized, might need a different zoning district in the future when it comes time to develop, but overall, it's just a one-to-one conversion where your old district is really staying as your new district is, but with some revised standards related to each of those districts. Speaking again about the development types, think of these as sort of sub-districts within each of the residential districts. They give the applicant some opportunity to mix housing types where appropriate. In the case of a planned development type, have an illustration there for. It gives the opportunity in more rural settings or in suburban settings to set aside a large amount of open space, as you can see in the conservation illustration there, and in exchange for that, getting additional lots compared to what the developer would have normally gotten. And there's the conventional development type as well, just the, and these are all options in all the districts. So there's no mandate to do clustering or mandate to do the planned development type. A developer could still continue doing conventional as much as he or she wanted to, but these are options that are in there that allow, again, for additional lots in exchange for setting aside more open space and for having a mixing of housing types, which are both things that the HELAP recommends. Just a quick example, this is an excerpt of a table in the UDO draft in the RL Residential Low Density District. There are two options if you're doing a single-family detached development, either doing the conventional development or the conservation. And it shows here that you have a density allowance of basically one unit per acre on up to two units per acre, and open space requirements for the conventional option of twenty percent, and then option of thirty percent open space for the conservation development type. And the conservation development type is going to allow, as I said, more density, more lots per acre, generally speaking than what the conventional is going to allow. Here's a view of the zoning map. Again, it is mostly relabeling of districts. If you were to compare these two, you'd have a probably a hard time seeing much of a difference, but it is, this is a component of this project. Any UDO project like this has the text on one hand and the map on the other hand, and this map will be adopted together with the UDO. And if somehow, for some reason, the map isn't adopted on the ninth and the text is, then the text, it's set up in the UDO, the text doesn't become effective until the map is actually adopted. But we don't anticipate that, but just in case that happens, there's, that provision is built in. And there may be some refinements between now and August with both the text and the map when we come to you for the second hearing and adoption, but those would be very minor in nature. One good tool that people seem to appreciate is the land use lookup that is going to be part of this UDO as well, where I have a few screenshots on the PowerPoint, if you can see them. Someone using, and this is from a different project, but it would be similar, someone thinks they want to do some kind of office. So they go to the land use lookup tool and select office there from the menu, and it turns out they really, they want to do a bank, and they want to see what district that bank can be located in. So they select bank, and there is a listing of the zoning districts that are, that that use is allowed in, and you can click View on Map, as you might be able to see on one of the images here. And if you click that, View on Map, you'll get a map, a zoning map of the town, and it will show each of the zoning districts where that land use, in this case, a bank is allowed. And so it would look something like this, but of course, be Harrisburg's map and Harrisburg's districts. So that, we found that this reduces calls to staff so that they can spend their time doing other things that are maybe more substantial, and it helps the public, you know, learn to document themselves and answer some questions that are, you know, relatively easy and that, you know, I can't promise that Sushil will get no calls in a day anymore, but this could definitely help decrease some of those so that people are able to see in an intuitive way where things are allowed versus not allowed. Of course, part of this document is the land use table. It is similar but more simplified than what you currently have, where there are listings of land uses, of course, along the rows there, and along each of the columns are the zoning districts and those development types that I showed earlier. So that, for example, multifamily dwelling is only allowed in the residential high-density district, as you might expect, and it requires a special use permit in the conventional development type, and it is allowed by right with limitations in the planned development type. And there are standards that I wanted to give you an example of, where if someone were doing a multifamily development, as an example, in that planned development type, there are certain standards they would have to live up to. So again, either obtaining a special use permit if they were in the conventional development type within that zoning district, or if they're in the planned development type, they would be limited in height to two stories, basically if they are within sixty feet of residential or three stories in height for the buildings if they were within a hundred feet of residential. Also, in order to incur, you know, require a mix of uses, an apartment-type development is going to require also some amount of non-residential development with it. It doesn't mean it has to be in the same building in this instance, but it would need to be part of the overall development, and that amount of non-residential development is based on how many apartment units are being built in a kind of a graduated scale. Moving on to the building and site design standards, this covers a wide variety of topics, from building design to stacking and parking, tree preservation, lighting, and several other things. As you can see, this document, again, is very heavily illustrated with all new illustrations. We are very, try to be very clear about when certain provisions apply and when they don't. So there is, as opposed to on the left, just sort of text listing out applicability requirements and what kinds of development activity trigger what kinds of standards, there's a table where different levels of development activity, whether it's, you know, brand-new development or if someone's only expanding a small part of their footprint, then fewer of the standards apply versus, you know, a brand-new development. So this, this table spells that out. Going to building design, we have several different sections on building design in the draft, zero lot line, where the houses are built on one side of the property. We have some standards related to those, multifamily standards, and then non-residential and mixed-use standards that are very, again, heavily illustrated. We have provisions for outdoor dining as far as protecting the diners from any kinds of vehicular accidents, provisions, new provisions related to drive-through design, as well as, just as an example, requiring second, at least false, if not true, second stories for buildings that exceed a certain size and width. We also have building design standards for the city center, where your town hall is located, for industrial areas. for industrial areas, which we call employment centers. And we also have in the drafts now, public art requirements where if a development exceeds a certain size and there are requirements to provide public art or a fee in lieu of the public art. And there are standards that guide providing that amenity to the site. We also have a sustainability bonus and sustainability requirements where basically the concept is, is that if a development works in various environmentally friendly characteristics, and I have several of those listed on the screen, solar panels, Energy Star, HVAC, and appliances, something as simple as skylights and other things like that, then they work their way up to meeting the sustainability points that are required. In residential, depending on how many dwelling units there are, that, those point target ranges from one and a half to two and a half points. And then for non-residential and mixed-use development, the target is from two to three points. And that table, you might not be able to see it in too much detail, but each of those on that table excerpt are sustainability characteristics and the number of points associated with them. So just as an example, if someone were doing a rather small residential development with, I think that it was 30 units is the cutoff, so with 30 dwelling units in it, that's a, that's a one and a half point sustainability requirements that are required. If they did something like, if it were in a conservation or planned development type, that's half the battle right there because that's worth point seven five points. And if they did one other thing like providing a recycling facility as part of the development, then that would get them at one and a half points. So it's that kind of point system where there's freedom to pick and choose, you know, what characteristics you have in there as long as you meet a certain threshold. If you exceed that threshold, then there are several bonuses that are available depending on by how many points the developer exceeds them. Those bonuses range from extra density, additional building heights than what they would normally be able to have, reductions in parking, and increases in allowable sign area. There is parking requirements overall in this UDO. We have both minimums and maximums. We have provisions for shared parking. We clearly illustrate parking dimensional requirements, like the width of the stalls that are needed and the drive aisle and that kind of thing. We have loading requirements that are designed to minimize impacts on adjacent properties so that loading needs to either be substantially buffered and screened or take place within sort of an enclosed area of the building. We have stacking requirements as well, which are the ways that typically like fast-food restaurants or Starbucks have spaces where cars are required to stack up at the place where they place their order and then at the window as well. And then cross-access requirements are part of this UDO as well. Landscaping, there are, one addition, as I mentioned earlier, is the rear buffer requirement between two residences that are in different, differing subdivisions. Buffering allows, when it's between zoning districts, allows you to transition from uses that might potentially conflict with each other and you might normally not want next to each other. But buffering in between, which is, and buffering is tree plantings, shrubs, and something like a berm or a fence or a wall. Those kind of things make it easier to, and more acceptable generally, to locate uses next to each other. Again, that might normally not be acceptable to locate next to one another. We have tree protection standards as well. In this draft, a tree survey is required to go along with most zoning requests. Fencing is required during construction around the critical, around the critical root zone of shade trees and heritage trees. There are penalties in the UDO draft if a heritage tree is damaged or removed or dies. And those are shown on the screen. There are replacement requirements for the, if a heritage tree is removed or dies. And those are shown on the screen where they have to be double the caliper inches, the amount of, of caliper inches of the little replacement trees, which admittedly doesn't usually add up or doesn't totally replace the magnitude of the heritage tree. But the amount of, the diameter measurement of these replacement trees has to be double whatever the caliper inches around the trunk was of, of the heritage tree. There are fines for dead or removed trees there on the screen. A thousand dollars plus 35 cents for every square foot of land where the violation occurred. If there's no evidence of what was, of the trees that were damaged or removed or a thousand dollars per dead or damaged tree plus a hundred dollars per diameter inch per dead or damaged tree when there are stumps remaining or other kinds of evidence like that. We have outdoor lighting provisions that concentrate on preventing glow into the night sky and light pollution like that and bleeding light onto adjacent properties. Subdivision design standards where how streets are arranged, how open space is dedicated, lot design, easement layout, street connectivity. You, you had street connectivity in your existing UDO and that is definitely a best practice in our minds and we retain that. Freshen up the graphics a little bit. Moving on, kind of switching gears to administration. Those were all standards that I was talking about. This next part of the presentation that remains is more procedurally oriented. So we lay out the purpose of the UDO, which is important for the future thing, what the UDO is attempting to accomplish. Often, if there are big development projects or future changes to the text of the UDO, then those changes and those projects are measured up with what the UDO is trying to promote often. There are requirements in, in here related to conflicting provisions that 160B requires that deal with conflicts of interest for staff and elected officials, but also deal with conflicts within the UDO itself. If we wouldn't want there, we wouldn't, wouldn't intentionally put in any conflicts into the draft that would end up being adopted. But in case there are, or in case in the future, if there are changes made that end up conflicting with what's in the UDO, then there are measures with how to deal with that. Each elected and appointed body and each staff member that's sort of at more of the director level, their powers and duties are spelled out in this part of the UDO, so that is very clear. And the development review procedures, we have a set of common review procedures. Often, there are a set of things that almost any application has to go through, whether it's, you know, submitting the application and the fee, review for completeness, that everything that's provided has been provided, that public hearings are held in certain ways and public notices provided, things to do that have to take place after the approval. All those kind of things that are common to all or most development review procedures are in this part of the UDO. There's also a table, we like using tables, that show each of the development review procedures. It shows the timing of the seminal, in other words, like why the application and approval would be needed and what its timing needs to be. And explains when that, each of the applications expires if no action is taken by the applicant, usually in terms of months. It shows who makes a recommendation for each of the procedures and then who takes final action. And it also lists out each of the kinds of public notices that are required, whether it's posted, published, or mailed. There are common decision criteria in the document as well that each of the procedures are measured up against. Examples are compliance with the Halle or, you know, something like if there was a previous review and approval that was made, like in a preliminary plat, then saying that the, the application that follows up, for example, the final plat has to comply with what was approved previously. Consistency with the standards of the UDO is another one. So just grouping these kind of very common decision criteria all in one spot so that they're not contradictory to each other or worded slightly different. If you had, you know, compliance with the comprehensive plan as a rezoning criteria, but then you say conformance with the comprehensive plan in another standard. Sometimes people wonder if that's the same thing. We have them all right here and all worded at one time to be consistent. There are several changes that come from North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D. Have those bulleted out here, just plain updating the references that were 160A or 153A to 160D. Updating certain terms that the 160D says that the UDO needs to use. Some of those include special use permits instead of conditional use permits, using the terms administrative decision or legislative decision or quasi-judicial decision. Many of these were, were best practices that we probably would have wanted y'all to do anyway, but it's good that your state recognizes the importance of good planning documents. Mentioned the conflict of interest provisions. There's just some other provisions in there. Code enforcement is required to enter during reasonable hours. I don't remember if that's specifically spelled out, but you know, when, when a typical, you know, person's going to be awake as opposed to dead at night. Standards for revocation of certain approvals. And then some notification requirements, expanding those from basically a minimum of 100 feet to a minimum of 300 feet. This UDO has provisions for addressing non-conformities. Those are the legally established uses or structures or signs that were legally built and got all the permitting done at one time, but have now, due to changes in the UDO, whether changes in this, you know, in this round of updates or the previous updates, made that sign or structure or use not conform with, with the current regulations. So there are parameters for how non-conformities can expand or intensify, how to convert a non-conforming use to a conforming use, and then provisions for converting from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Those are spelled out, how that needs to take place. Enforcement is in here as well. We describe everything that constitutes a violation of the UDO, whether it's not getting a permit and doing work anyway, violating a condition of approval, like in a conditional rezoning, things of that nature. Providing timeframes for correction and then spelling out what the town can do as far as penalizing, you know, violations. Getting close to the end here, word usage has construction of language, which are what we mean when we say and versus what we mean when we say or. That can be important when there's a listing of requirements. Being clear that the words shall and must are requirements and should, although we don't like to use that too much in a set of regulations that, that should is more optional. A lot of other things like that. We provide acronyms and abbreviations so that those are easily understood. And then, of course, the definitions that are used, of terms that are used in the UDO. I'm going to take you through as kind of the final piece of this, take you through a development scenario of a development that's already gone through the process as far as I know. I believe it was, been approved already, but just to show some of the differences that it could have ended up being like under the draft UDO. So this is a certain development that was proposed and undertaken in the RM1 district. It would be the RM district now. If a rezoning, and I don't know much of the background on this, on sort of, it's just sort of a hypothetical situation, but with, you know, the visual image there. If a rezoning had been required as part of this, initiating this project, the property owners within a 300-foot radius would have had to have been notified rather than a 100-foot radius. So, you know, I'm just kind of showing with the stars the general locations of those outlying properties. But also, if there are large lots that abut the development, like the larger than five acres, then the notification requirement would extend to even the properties that are adjacent to that large lot, which in this case, and I don't know the background of that large piece of property, it might be undeveloped or whatever the case may be. But in this sort of theoretical example, the lots on the other side of that large property shown in the green star would also have been notified of any rezoning that might have been needed to do this development. In this development, the average lot size was 11,500 square feet. And the lots range from 76, 7,680 to 15,000 square feet. In the draft, the minimum lot area for RM is 15,000 square feet. There is some flexibility, the smallest lots could be 10% less than that size as long as the overall average for lot size for the development were 15,000 square feet. In the draft, only 10% of open space can be inaccessible to the general public. However, in this development, according to the calculations and the margin of the drawing, 25% was inaccessible in this development. The connectivity ratio, which is the extent to which streets are connected within the development, met your current requirements, of course, and it meets the requirements in the draft. The draft requires a 25-foot buffer and a six-foot berm along major thoroughfares. So on that north side of the street that traverses the development, there would have, need to have, have been a, a buffer and a berm provided, which apparently looks like was not in the, in the development as submitted. And then, as I said earlier, lots on the perimeter would need to match the lot area and lot width of the lots that already exist on the surrounding property. So these external lots in yellow stars that are part, that were part of other subdivisions, the, the lots in this new development would have to match those. And they might have, it was hard to really eyeball. Maybe that lower right one might not have quite matched what was needed. So that would have been something else that would have been different with this development if it were under the draft UDO. So what's coming up? The town council public hearing for action would again be August 9th. It's the middle of the development guidebook. There's kind of a preview of it with the flow charts that you see in the visuals, along with, we would have application forms and a fee schedule. So that concludes my presentation and be happy to try to answer any questions.
Ryan, this is Councilman Dellinger. When I went to the, some of the meetings and then to the planning and zoning board, can you go back to the slide? And you fixed it, Cecile, but help me understand on the sustainability that they don't eventually counsel out each other? Is there any way?
Yeah.
You get so many credits that it just like counsels out the sustainability?
So one of the things, Councilmember Dellinger, is in the draft, that went to the planning board, we did not have a minimum points requirement. So to counter that, somebody would get a point and get a bonus that fall against each other. We did, we made regulations where there is a threshold they have to meet for each of the projects. And we also went back and removed some of the, I think the biggest thing that was brought up was the pavement. I think we went and removed that. But that bare minimum threshold is, is the biggest addition to that, which means every project that comes through Harrisburg need to have, I think we set up to a minimum of three points to address the sustainability component. And if they go beyond that, that's when they're eligible for bonus.
Cecile, how, I wasn't in that meeting, I'm sorry, but how easy is it to get? The one that concerns me is increase in maximum allowable height and 10 feet. So for those of you that don't know, building codes in general and zoning codes in particular are a game. So for those of you that don't know, building codes in general and zoning codes in particular are a game, right? You know, you want to build a certain type of project. You take a piece here, you take a piece here, you figure out how to play the game within the code to get what you want. The one thing you never give away is height and stories in codes. So is that strong enough for you? I mean, what does it take? You'd have to give me a million dollars for me to give you an extra story on any building in any zoning district. Does that, does that seem reasonable?
I think, yeah, I mean, again, until we get into implementing it, we don't know what kind of problems we will run into. But based on what we've seen in other communities, that seems to be the best practice.
That's what they're doing.
So we're bringing it, again, looking at what other communities in North Carolina, and as you said, as Minneapolis, they had a lot of, I think their sustainability component is expanded and a little bit more than what we have, it's a little bit more commercial. So what we did is looked at that, looked at what the National APA has put out on guidelines, kind of looking at those and simplifying it. Will we gain or will we run into something as we implement this? We don't know that yet. But based on the guidance, it should be able to be implementable. But again, the U D O can change. Once, once we get into the implementation and if staff thinks some of the regulations that could look good in the paper but are becoming cumbersome, then we'll bring that back to you and go through a public hearing and make those changes.
But it's like it's three stories in city center, right?
We don't have a number of stories, you know, we have a maximum height. So that kind of loosely translates, yeah.
Basically the same thing. So potentially you could have, you could have a four story building potentially
Could be.
in this area adjacent to all the sort of smaller buildings. So by buying a whole bunch of, you know, you've got hot water heaters, you could have tall buildings in here that they didn't really give us much for.
They could, based on the ordinance, but again, modern days we'll go through a conditional rezoning. If it does not fit the context of the neighborhood, we don't have to accept it. It is up to us to allow that bonus if we choose to.
We, we can make that decision.
Correct.
Because I don't want to give away the farm. I mean, I'm all for sustainability, as you know, but I don't want to, you know, building codes are strict for reasons.
Yeah, think, think of the U D O and these guidelines as to have something in the books that we as a staff and council, as you as a policymaker, can choose to decide after looking at the overall context. It does not give away, but it provides you a baseline to work with.
I mean, I'm just looking at the one he listed, like energy star H K C, everything's energy star now, right? Check. Tankless water, everybody's doing that now, check. Brighter green roof, all flat work, roofs are basically white now. Nobody does tar roofs, check. Skylights, easy, cheap, right? Roofies overhangs, easy. Provision for recycling station, easy. So the only one on here that's really difficult, solar panels, or costly, I should say, are not standard practice.
Yeah, I think that's why. So the way we look at it is how do we encourage areas where they don't do this? Yes, some of the folks like you, you've been, it isn't strong enough. We do more than other private sector folks do. So by allowing those manual options and capping the minimum threshold, so they have to meet that minimum threshold. They may choose a host of items from here, but until they meet that, they're not going to get the bonus. So we're trying a way to encourage that where it may not be possible.
Well, maybe you and I, I'm sorry, maybe you and I can talk a little later, just because I want to make sure.
Until now, in August.
Yeah, I mean, like next week, just to make sure I understand it 100%. Because I haven't seen these changed before and I just want to make sure. Because I understand that we can change it, but you could end up with a couple of buildings that we really don't want, you know, because of what we did, because we were trying to be proactive and good for the environment. And that's great, but let's make sure that we.
Yeah, that's what's the draft.
That's what's in black.
Cecile, on that heritage tree, walk me through real quick a calculation. It's $7,000 and 35 cents per square foot. So what, you know, let's say they take out a heritage tree, what does that look like financially to them? What would you say 35 cents a square foot?
And the tree, they have to patch the area trees, so they've got to put trees in and they got to.
So they had to, yeah, so if the tree is gone, number one, they have to mitigate based on the caliber. So let's say if it is a 35 inch caliber tree, so that times two, so that's 70. So now you have to find three inch caliber minimum size tree to get to that 70 round figure. So you need to plant those, number one. Number, and then the second point is the financial penalty. So it adds up if it's a bigger community. If it's a smaller, it may not be big enough. But if we talk about Orchid Riz or Harmony and those, those size of communities, it adds up. And that, that example was again, based on, we didn't have that provision in the current U D O for the penalty.
We just had a flat fee, I thought.
We didn't have a fee for any.
Oh, we didn't.
We didn't, the only thing we had was one to one replacement. So we increased that, number one, we increased the threshold higher and then we added penalty.
And Cecile, those trees that they're going to plant is going to be in the neighborhood they were destroyed in, not somewhere over here or over there. It's going to be pertaining to the neighborhood where the tree was destroyed or the root system was destroyed.
Yeah, I think, I think that point was brought up before. We made sure that the language is there so that it's internal. Brian, let's check that if it is not clear on the draft.
It is. The first preference is that it be onsite, but if that is not feasible, then they would need to work with Cecile to, to make the, you know, the replantings take place in an, in an area that is, you know, nearby.
But what makes that not, I mean, I can destroy the tree, put a house there and say, oh, it's not feasible because I want to use that lot to build a $250,000, $300,000 home. So what makes it not feasible? I can say, oops, sorry, I took this tree down. Well, we'll go ahead and put a house here. So help me understand what makes it feasible.
Well, the feasible from a sense, think about a subdivision, right? When it comes to a conditional rezoning, you have, you already see a road layout, you got the lots layout. There's common open space area and there's offers and things of that nature. The feasibility means based on the landscaping requirement, you have to plant X amount of trees regardless. But is there room within the project after all those lots that we've already approved to put that tree? It's not about going and cutting the tree and putting the extra lot, it's the other space around it. So we, the first priority in the code, the way it's written, is you try to pack as much as you can within the community, because every tree has to maintain spacing. If we can't, then we work to bring it to a public space nearby. I think that's what it means. It does not mean that you cut a tree after the approval and go and increase a lot. No, that's not it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Just starting, good, good, move forward. Up to public hearing.
We're waiting, yeah, open the public hearing at this point.
No, I know what I'm going to do.
All right, yeah, a couple of things I wanted to address, Mayor. I know a lot of, there was a lot of discussions about the speeding to the community early on. One of the things we've changed in the U D O is the block plan. So a lot of times the larger blocks means the larger span of road. So there's what we call transportation wall friction. The more amount of friction, the speed table is a friction. The narrowing of roads, the tricanes of that tools, those are friction. Block length is the friction too. So we've added some of those to make it less palatable to speed. We can't solve every problem. There are some folks, even those who live within the community that are speeding through. But I think we've added some tools to help us design the community better.
Any other questions for, open up, open up the public hearing for those of you here for or against the adoption of U D O, for or against. Round the phone, raise your hand if you're in the room, press the podium. Yeah, for or against? Last call. First public hearing, if we will have consideration at the next council meeting. And then the public rights session with.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. So the whole business item A is construction of abandonment of public rights of way associated with Hereford Lane off of Route Fiddler Drive. We held a public hearing on this matter last month. So we're bringing it back to the council to take, take action as to whether to abandon that public right of way. So we did receive a petition from Donna S. West and family and Mitchell family, who are the jointing property owners from this public right of way, asking the town to consider abandoning that. If you recall, as part of the Harmony subdivision, we initially talked about connecting those two stubs. One of them was Hereford Lane. And as part of the rezoning, council made a decision not to connect to that stub. So that stub is of no use for a public anymore and staff has no problem. And we recommended that council adopt a reservation and abandon that public right of way. We did not receive, this is a reference for where the property is, and the store serves two property owners that requested abandonment. With that, we did not receive any comments at the last meeting and we're asking that council adopt the reservation to abandon it. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Not too much.
Much too much.
And most of them. Thank you, Mr. Russo. On more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Question carries. All right, I guess you're going to hang up.
Yeah, I got a couple more items. So this one is again, carryover from a public hearing we had last meeting. This is a conditional rezoning, zoning map amendment and annexation of properties off of Hickory's Road, the south of the elementary school over there. There are three parcels associated with this rezoning. The total acreage is 52.17 acres and the pin numbers are associated with this rezoning are listed on your slide. The goal here, if the rezoning is approved tonight from the head office, is to subdivide the property and build 42 single family homes. The property is currently in the county and will need to be annexed. The current rezoning, the current zoning for the property is CR, Countryside Residential, and the request is conditional R M one, which is a medium density classification in our U D O, in our current U D O. Here is the property location map. On the top right corner, you can see generally where it is in relation to the current corporate limit. The blue stated area is where the Harrisburg limits are. On the left hand side is a close look at where the property is and the parcels associated with the rezoning. There's a site plan that was presented during the public hearing. I'll quickly go through it. Nothing has changed. There are a couple of items that were brought up at the public hearing. I'll highlight those, how we've addressed that. So again, there is, there's eight foot perimeter buffer on the north, which there's already a 15 foot buffer that was required for the school. So this will be in addition to that. On the south side, during the public hearing, it was presented with an eight foot buffer. There was a comment and concern raised by Councilmember Smith, and applicant is now expanding that to 15 feet to the south and also adding eight foot buffer to the, to the backend as well. And the other concern that was brought up at the public hearing was, I think, Councilmember Dellinger, about the stormwater and safety, given that we have a trail connecting to the school. So we have now upgraded that fencing to a five foot aluminum fence as well. There is a walking trail connecting this school so the folks, if they choose to, living in this community when it is built, can walk to the community. We have a requirement for median divided entryway that enhances the look of the community. There is also a 20 foot buffer, even though it's not in the U D O. You heard earlier that the draft U D O makes it a requirement. We were able to work with the applicant to make that requirement and put that as part of the zoning. There is provision for mailbox, mailbox kiosk with on-street parking as required and also emergency access, not a public, for emergency vehicle access behind those homes. There, as you see on the slides. There are some examples of what those homes could look like if it is approved and built on the site. And I would like to spend a few minutes just going through the land use recommendation that the H E L O P that was adopted. The area, if you look on the right hand side with the star designation, that's where the property is. And this is characterized for future growth for low density residential and allows for up to three units per acre, primarily single family detached homes. And of course, the H E L O P always recommends if you can, if you can have conservation design and you can add more open space in extent for smaller lots. This is not a conservation design subdivision. This is your, what we call a conventional subdivision. It's not a conservation. So in the H E L O P, there is also a table that, that provides some guidance for, for staff and the council to look at. So if it was a low density residential, what is appropriate zoning in the current U D O, which is RL, R M one and PID? And what they are requesting is R M one and meets that recommended. Just a point of reference, if we were to adopt the draft U D O next month, this table, we could change if the council chooses to, but we do have enough references in the new U D O that we can, we can cross-reference to look at that table. But if council chooses down the road, we can very well go back and change the H E L O P to, to, to reference the right zoning as well. So R M one is, is again, is consistent with the intent of the H E L O P as 0.8 units per acre is the, is the gross density for the subdivision. Again, going back to the adequate public facilities, there are utilities available in the area, water sewer. But again, given, given the manholes and where there are, all the cost of those extensions is not public cost. It's up to the applicant and they will bear the cost to extend that line. A T I A was not required, given the number of homes. We have a threshold typically that translates to 71 homes. If you're less than that, then a T I A is not triggered. We do have adequate police, fire and sanitation to serve the area if it is approved. The school numbers, again, this is, we get it, we reach out to the county. There is a dual purpose, one, to inform them what's in the pipeline if it gets approved, how this will impact their school capacity. Number two is to get some student generation associated with this project so the council can get some idea of how many students we're adding to it. So based on the information provided by the county, the elementary school will add 18 new students, middle will nine, and the high school will 12. On the left, on the right hand side, you can see how does that translate to the future capacity. Again, the school uses this number to, to plan for the capital improvement. It would be nice if they were more proactive, but again, you can't build out school and city vacant in anticipation of students. So it's always reactive. I know there's a lot of concerns in the community, but that's the way it, it works. But I don't think I've ever had a situation where a student was turned, turned away. They always reassign or reclassify or add something to make, make it, make it work. There were, as we do with the conditional rezoning, the site plan itself is a condition and remains with the land if it is approved. And we also add some statements, some highlights of statements, so we don't miss that down the road. The first one is our catchall, if there are any, any regulations we miss that apply to this, then regardless of approval, the document will apply. The applicant has agreed to restrict the primary plating to non-vinyl products, so the vinyl siding would not be used. Applicant also agrees that there will be no exposed concrete foundations. That has been our new conditions that we have added. Agrees that the mailbox clusters will be meeting the ADU standards. I know it's not a big deal, but we've run into issues during the CDs with some of the projects we wanted to put out there, so we're not missing those. Applicant agrees to mitigate and replace heritage trees if they're damaged. And again, we talked about how that can be done in the U D O. When it goes through the preliminary platting, the CDs, those new U D Os will apply for this. Applicant agrees that all ponds will be wet ponds and there is, there is a minimum depth requirement. And the number seven is, is the change we made after the public hearing to change that to five foot aluminum fence. Uh, and the number seven is, is the change we made after the public hearing to change that to five-foot aluminum fence. Uh, and then uh the eighth uh condition is that um the roads will be our engineering design state. Uh, now, going back to the annexation, we, we, as, as I mentioned earlier, this property, uh, those three parcels are in the county and we, we held a public hearing for rezoning and annexation together as the last meeting. So tonight's accent is mind accent if the council chooses to approve this position and rezoning. Uh, annexation will take the property out of the county and bring it within, within the town corporate limits. As required by law, we have posted notice and notified the owners, neighboring owners about the annexation of the rezoning. And this is just a, a annexation plaque for your reference. So uh, for the summarizing that we held, the never meeting is required uh on January twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one. That's when the process formally started. Uh, the proposed rezoning, as I explained during uh my earlier presentation, it does meet the H E L O P uh recommendation and also meets, meets our current U D O. Uh, planning and zoning board recommended approval at the May eighteenth meeting. And uh, council held the public hearing and closed the public hearing uh last month on June fourteenth. Uh, the requested voluntary annexation again is in the county and it's contiguous, meaning there is a uh boundary, it's there. So the, uh, school being there, it makes it contiguous to our corporate boundary. Uh, with, with all of that information, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but at this point, uh, staff is recommending that council consider approving the rezoning request. I know we have representative from the applicant to address any questions you may have at this point.
And what a question for Sushil? Is the water sewer, the D R Horton, do not put it on?
Is it dependent on, no, it, it is not at this point.
So they are separate and would be, they have the ability to, I know the D R Horton has to go across six bars.
Yeah, so the water is along the road, the sewer on this property is behind on the creek. Yeah, the, the D R Horton is going, going a different direction, going up to really create to tap into the sewer.
Motion to the council. Move, move approval, Mr. Mayor. On the floor.
Second.
Property executive. Any more discussion? All the. Oppose, nay? Question carries. Are you up again?
So this will be the last one for the tonight. Um, so what you have in front of you again, this is, this is a carryover from public hearing we held last month. This, you'll, you'll see this happening quite a bit because we're lined up to bring more projects in front of you for planning more. So you'll see the public hearing and then adoption happening uh back to back. Um, so this H twenty-twenty-one O two R is folks landing subdivision down on um Plaza Road just south of Rock River River. Um, and the request is to rezon three parcels. It's a small acreage, configure what we just talked about, two-point-four-five acres, you have the list of the parcels there. Um, again, the goal here is to build six single-family attached homes. So those are townhomes that the applicant is requesting to be built. The property is in the, is in the county and will need to be annexed. Also wanted to make a note that we have six units on our side, but this, this rezoning expands into Metromore County. And there is, there is already an approved rezoning from the Metromore side that they are ready to build. Uh, it was not a conditional rezoning, so the applicant did not have to submit a site plan to Metromore County the way we had to do for us. Uh, ours is a conditional rezoning, so uh we're able to control a bit of the quality of what goes in there. The current zoning is low-density residential and request is to rezon to conditional R V, to allow the townhomes. This is the location of the property, uh, you can see again on the top right, uh, relating to the corporate boundary and, and on the left-hand side, it is where, where it is. If you can see my cursor, uh, that's, that's basically the county line. To the left is Metromore County and to the right, right is Coeur d'Alene. So um, there is a reference, just to give you an idea of what, what the townhome's layout looks, looks like in the, in the Metromore side, which is in the, in the faded. But on, on the right-hand side, it's more of a close look of, of those six townhome units that falls within, within uh Coeur d'Alene County. And if it is annexed, will be part of the Harrisburg. Uh, there is, there is twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five. Let's see that. We had a twenty-foot perimeter buff- buffer on the north of the property, twenty-five feet buffer along. Uh, again, that's the thoroughfare requirement with six-foot burn, so that provides some privacy. We've uh made, made the requirement that the main entryway we need and divided into way to enhance that look of the entry of the subdivision and also uh allows for opportunity to put any signage for the subdivision if you choose to do so. Uh, again, I already mentioned that on, on the other end, the faded area is where the Charlotte already approved the rezoning. Uh, both were applied at the same time, but since there was not a conditional rezoning, it did not require a site plan and did not take that much time to go through the process. Uh, there is again mailbox kiosk already identified with on-street parking. Uh, we have some common open space uh along Plaza Road. If you drive through there, you'll see that, uh, we've added some amenities, uh, which we're able to do as part of the conditional rezoning. And uh, one of the, I think council member Patrick, you brought up at the last meeting. We had one of the conditions on our side is no vinyl siding and, and the attached townhome units are also considered. Uh, there, there, there are some rules that apply within the commercial design guidelines. It was thirty-five percent high-quality brick or similar materials. On the Charlotte side, we don't have it. Uh, but we were able to work with the applicant to at least, um, even though it's not a requirement, we don't have rules in place, but they were willing to put a condition as part of this project is to, to uh have no vinyl siding on all of those townhomes that, that uh front street B, right across from the six townhome units that, that are in Harrisburg. Um, the other major difference between what's happening in the Metromore side versus our side is our townhome units, the six homes are alley-loaded townhomes. Um, I'll show you a, a picture of the example elevation. So if you're driving through Plaza Road, you will not be seeing a row of garages, so you'll be see a good front of the problem. Uh, on the Charlotte side, it's a, it's a front-loaded. Uh, the only added benefit uh is that those, those uh fronting on, on street B will not have any vinyl. So here is an example of what that home would look like and it's, and, and also follows that condition of no vinyl siding. So if you're driving along Plaza Road extensive, this will, what, what you'll see. Uh, going back to the land use recommendation, which I went through during the public hearing as well. Uh, this property is a little bit tricky because when the map was done, it, it is right where the mixed-use designation is, where, where the P U D was created many years ago. Farmington and the Brookdale Commons, the townhomes there, Harris Theater, Nobond. Um, it's right on the edge, uh, upward the mixed-use district is, uh, and also right on the county line. Um, and only three properties that, that is west of Plaza Road extensive. So uh, staff made, made the, made the connection that it, it makes sense, given that Charlotte is already uh approved the townhomes, to have those three parcels be, be townhomes and, and be an extension of that mixed-use. So that's why we were bringing this as a mixed-use community.